The flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
The regular meeting extends to Friday, December 8/11, at 9:00 here in the community center. Page five, your performance. As you can see from the agenda, we've got a long meeting again today. We are going to shorten it by one item. If you're here only for five G, we're going to pull that item. Staff needs to do a little bit more research on it before we have that discussion. But with that, let's go to the consent agenda.
I move.
Second. Then move in second to refer to consent agenda and the discussion.
Yeah. All right, give me one second. I have a question for Omar. On the president's report, I see that our revenue was pulled short last year. At least they're saying that way. It doesn't seem like they're going to get any better. I'm just wondering, why would they be, why would be short? You got any idea what's going on?
Were you looking at the general fund?
No, I'm looking at, yeah, general fund. That's where the assessments are and everything. I'm just not sure why, why would they be, would be short on revenues this year?
A lot of times too, if you look at prior years, there was a lot of FEMA funding and insurance reimbursement without taking it down. Obviously this year we haven't had those issues. So if you take out FEMA funding from the prior years, assuming that was thrown off as prior year comparisons.
I'm just looking at this year versus last year.
Right.
Last year, it was $3,841,464. And this year, you're projecting it to be, I don't know, $3,500,000. So it's like $2,000,000.
Right. Did last year have three months?
Not three hundred dollars. How many did we give them? How about we do, let's see this, can you get back to me or the board on why you think we're having a discrepancy? Something like that. I don't think it's FEMA. I just, we only got a small check last year. It came around $45,000,000, and I don't, that was all they owed us. But, you know, let me know what you think is going on. The golf report. I got, I got two questions on that, Michael. I don't, when are we going to stop seeing crashes on the outside tents? I mean, we've all known about this for three, four months. You're not going to say you're not going to do it anymore. Very much.
We are looking at it in the near future. So we're starting to ask this, we're, you know.
So we're still using outside tents? You, it appears that way.
Right. We're working on trying to acquire that last year. We're looking to do that process.
The three best versions of that. The three best versions of the outside tents.
But you're running about $8,000 a month, so we'll see that until Christmas comes.
That is the new plan. We're trying to turn into all of these, so we're looking to do it over.
So the next couple of months, we'll see $8,000 in that, in that month, right? About?
Yeah, I would say, I'm looking, I'm just, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering if you're seeing that.
Okay. And then one other question on the, uh, the restaurant. Do we have a plan on, I know we have lots of plans, lots of ideas, but do we have a plan on how we're going to get the labor aligned with the food sales? Because when you run all over from the labor exceeds your food sales, your chances of making money are not very good.
Yeah, it's really tough, you know, in these circumstances, trying to keep our following employees here. You know, obviously we're trying to, or limiting the amount of labor that we're using all while trying to maintain the following employees that we have, especially in the, you know, kitchen side. You know, and I would say, I already need, pretty much probably every summer we run somewhat of a deficit there. But maybe this, I think, issue going forward is going to be the return of the majority of our rental revenue. Obviously, our, our labor. And hopefully we start to see that turn around, and then I think we'll see the, you know, when we start to have those, if our labor is not going to be, we're not going to be able to, so when we start to see the return of those, I think we'll see the labor percentage fall back.
Oh, that is helpful. Right. Any further board extension? Any public comments? This is called question.
Supervisor Bradson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradson? You don't need supervisor here.
Yes.
President of the board?
Yes.
And we go to the action items. The first item meeting the resolution with the Sunlight District, including District Number 2020, 800,000, 101,000. So that's the recreation facility in the community center theme for fiscal year 2021. Is there motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second in board discussion?
Well, there's one thing left out, and that's the shuffleboard, of course, in here someplace, right?
It's part of the record book.
The shuffleboard is part of the record book?
Should we maybe say that? We just said that earlier, we just said that.
I mean, since it's new, maybe we should include it as first year and say shuffleboard, of course.
Put it in the record book and shuffleboard. When we post the rates, just.
Any public comment? The, now, this is our question.
Supervisor Bradson?
Uh, no.
Supervisor Bradson? Supervisor here?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President of the board?
Yes.
The next item is Resolution 2020-0828-22, a resolution of Sunlight District to adopt the golf facilities raised for fiscal year 2021, not approved at the prior board meeting under Resolution 20272418. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
And moving second. Any board discussion? Any public comment?
Yes, you have an, what I'm done with, that is, third question. And, uh, just question I've got is, what has, what is the final solution? Is there an annual and a, are they six months or something for northern friends, or how's, how's this falling out?
You talking about the rates for the golf push, or just rates in general?
Rates for golf push.
Rates for the golf push have taken up 3%.
Huh?
3%. 3%. They took it up 3%. They're published. There was no changes in length for it.
Hey, well, my question is, my understanding is, there is a one-year and a five-month membership.
Correct.
It seems like we're, you know, most of our snowbirds come down for six months. It seems like you're pretty well shafted them because they're, they're shorter months when they come down, then they're forced to buy a one-year membership. Which I understand it makes more money for us, but it just doesn't seem like an equitable thing. Just like what we're coming.
And staff, my, my belief is that most of our snowbirds come for five months. Is there a general consensus that more will come for six?
They all come for six.
They all come for six?
I think it's closer to that. I think it's five.
We have a lot of fives because they sign up for it, but, uh, but the five is, in the alley, is quite, based on what I've seen, is quite expensive.
We went to the five.
Price per round, if I remember right.
We went to the five because we had requested for, they wanted relief from a year. It used to be an option, that was their only option, was one year. So we did go to the five, which, you know, we can argue back and forth, but there was great thing to do. People who take it six months, what they do now, they, if they want, they take out five months, and then they pay their way to pick.
Which seems fairly equitable, since we've got, I think, a lot to come for five months. And even the ones that come for six, do they really go off for six months, or do they get in to settle in and then take time to pack up and leave?
Well, I'll give, well, the people up north that come down here, they play a lot of golf.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we can encourage our, our larger group of snowbirds to come on that, uh, that meeting this winter. Hopefully the Canadians will come down.
I think they're commenting, they want us to do six months, but we don't do that.
The reason, the reason we haven't done it is economic, it's all money.
And what I've seen, you know, is if you're a single from up north, and your wife doesn't play, they buy a five-month. But to buy two five-months, more expensive, so they buy a family. So you can see the difference than if their wife costs.
Okay. Okay. Any other public comment? Any further board discussion? No question?
Supervisor Bradson? Supervisor here?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradson?
Yes.
President of the board?
Yes. The next item is Resolution Number 2020-0828-23, a resolution of Sunlight District to approve the RFP 2005 for the sewer lift station shredders project to C and T Contracting Services for $140,616,000. Is there a motion?
I agree with. Second.
Then move in second. Any board discussion?
I will understand it.
Can I give us a brief finding? Move, please, and staff?
Somebody explain it to me.
So I'll give you a quick recap. We've had this project in the capital for a few years now. Transferred from last year, we carried over this year. Basically, what this entails is putting a lift station, grinder pump, where if residences are, let's say, putting down their baby wipes or rags or towels, this unit will catch that, shred it up, and then move it towards the wastewater treatment plant. Right now, we're getting a lot of that infiltration all the way through the system, through the plant, and it's following our plant. So this should make maintenance, um, less, or more, less maintenance at our wastewater treatment plants and at that lift station as well. So we issued this for RFP, and the bid came back at $140,616,000, which was over our budget of $105,000. So the staff, we went back to the contractor, the lowest bidder, asked them to see if we could do some, um, direct purchases to reduce the price. So what we recommended is that we would buy the pumps directly as a government entity in order to save the sales tax. And we also asked them to remove the quote for the electrical component. They were getting electrician coming in from out of town. Um, so we decided to use air and electrical, which is our district contracted electrician, and that was about $10,000 savings there. So the benefit savings we're recommending to award contract to pay us were $97,000 for the total project coming in at $131,131, the, uh, the starter pump ourselves and pay our electrician. So we saved about $9,000 by making those two accommodations.
That's it. But where is the paperwork with the $30,000?
With $30,000?
I don't know. I gotta pay this, this, what do you call this thing? RFP? What is this? Is, uh, for $97,000, you're telling me the project costs $130,000? I'm betting down here it's $34,000 that we're not approving, or I don't know what we're doing with it. So how are you going to finish the project without the proper paperwork?
Right, so we're going to include the quote on the pumps. So the pumps are about $30,000 themselves, and then we got the quote for air and electrical for $4,000 a month. So there's the $30,000 between those two, for school people directly as a district.
But that's, that's in the project.
But that's not part of the RFP. With the RFP, we're only awarding $97,000 to this contract.
So what kind of document are we going to achieve?
The pump will come back for board approval as a direct purchase, but the pumps at $30,000.
What happens if we approve the RFP and the pumps come in at a higher price?
Then, we already have pricing on it, already.
Then why aren't we seeing that as part of a motion?
I guess why aren't we doing the whole thing at once?
Well, we tried to do, what we tried to do at, at, uh, at, come back in at $140,000, we tried to save money to anyone that saved money.
I understand.
We're back to the contractor, so we save about $10,000 doing it this way.
That's fine.
Okay. We also have our own electrician that's doing the work here, which, which to me is much better, because he's an in-house electrician. If anything comes up, you know, so we thought that would be good.
That's all fine. I'm not, I don't think.
We had the paperwork on, uh, yeah, we should have done two year one, we should have done two resolutions. I wanted to approve this, and I wanted to grant the direct purchase of the pumps, and then done. Unfortunately, we didn't do it at the same time, so the next board meeting, we'll bring back the pumps, we'll get this in line scheduled, and it'll all happen at the same time.
If it was me, I, I would probably pass on this, if we do it right.
I'll just, to try and clear this up a little bit, this is an RFP. So this is went out to bid, and so we need to award, what we're, what we're basically what we're doing is a partial award. The bid came in at $140,000, but because that's over budget, they went back and negotiated. So we basically negotiated it down. We're going to award it to the low bidder, but for less than the, than their bid price, because we've taken stuff out of the project. What we've taken out of the project will be paid for directly by the district. And because of our purchasing policy and the, what we're going to purchase is over $25,000, we bring that back to the board for board approval for the direct purchase of the shredders. But we still have to award this RFP.
I'm not arguing with anything, and I applaud the effort to try and save us money, but what I'm saying is, why am I doing the piecemeal? Why don't I do the whole thing at once?
Because we have to award the RFP. The RFP went out, and the bid was.
So without awarding the RFP, we can't do the other part. Why can't we just do them all at the same time? Like we always do. We always do everything all at once.
But it's not going to be a single contract. The contract is going to go to this streaming D contracting services, and the purchase is going to be separately by the district purchase to, is there a handle on that? Okay, so the purchase of those shredders.
I, I understand. We're, we're now being asked, because it's not, we're not approving the purchase at the same time as we're approving the RFP. We as a board are looking at, okay, we're approving the RFP without seeing anything that locks in the price and.
Understood. So then, then what we can do to resolve that is, if you want, then we can table this until we come back at the next board meeting, or whenever, if we come back with the purchase option for the shredders and the bidding.
That's our resolution.
There's two projects in this RFP as well.
We sold, if we sold it, it's one product. It went out and sold, the RFP has one, there's two products, Ex-Water and Florida Ass, so two pumps, each pump's on $15,000.
So the argument is that the argument is done without board approval.
Correct. Basically, we're going to use a full project off of both, a $131, and award the low bidder $97,000, we can go get these two products done by direct purchase, and save money on the sales tax.
That bid, those bids are based on doing the whole thing.
Right.
And that's how, and that's how the RFP was set out, but don't tell me the intention was no two projects.
Still, they come back to $131,000, it's happening, they were still in front of you with the full cost of $131,000. So you have the option now to approve the full $131,000, and give up the destruction, go ahead and purchase the two pumps for $15,000, and get this done.
You mean, the two purchases, $15,000, we need to, where's the paperwork for the process?
So what Omar is saying is that technically, they can buy a pump for $15,000 without board approval. So they can buy one pump to get the project started, and then they come back and buy the other pump, and they don't need the board approval to spend the $30,000 because it's worth $15,000.
Don't give me that, you're lazy.
No. Right, right. The reason why we did this is to save money for the district.
We, we argue with that.
All right, well, but that's why I saw you picking him up. Well, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm going to put this, because I saw, I saw room to make, to save us money, okay? And that's why we did it.
That's, that's acceptable. Go with the. I know, but, I mean, you know, the RFP funds go to save money for the district. Correct. And you did that.
But if you tell me, if you know the business, that's all we're saying.
I mean, the reality is, I understand the mentality, and I'd be okay with that. You know, same point, just, you know, we're, we're really approving the RFP, and you're going to spend $15,000 on the first pump, and then you're going to spend $15,000 later on the second pump. Yeah, and you want to get in by both at the same time. And it would have been better bringing both of us at the same time rather than each team. And that's, that's really what I'm saying. I, I could support going ahead and including the RFP. I'm hearing from the board, we'd rather have it done right, because we'd be both things together, which we may table with, but I'm okay with your way. We'll see if the board thinks that, we have some public comment. Any other board discussion? Any other public comment?
Mark Campbell, this is third one. I applaud the, the district to try and save money. I think that's important, and, and I know they're going to table this. I'm a little confused, though. They're going to go out and purchase these pumps, save us money.
Not a reason. They're brand building. You can just use that.
Right, going out and purchasing the pumps.
Yeah.
Okay? They're going to use out all our electrician, save the money. I agree that it should have been brought to the board at the same time, so everybody can realize that it's all a cost of this project, but you see, I don't have the points right now, $140,000, if it was avoided, then you say, you have an RFP, you have $97,000 that we have avoided, and they don't see the picture, the whole big picture of the pumps. So I, I think they could do a lot of clarification here at 30, and this is, but the second thing I have, and this might be more with the attorney, is on this RFP, did we go to the one that was hired there and give them the option of, because you have changed the RFP, you've gone up here, you've said, you have to have this pump, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. One came in at a higher rate, and you just pounded them, but yet you went back to the lower one, and you negotiated with them and said, well, if we buy our pumps and we use our own electrician, can we reduce it by that $30,000? Does that make sense, what you said, David? So did we go back to the first one that was hired?
We talked to both, we talked to both contractors and told them that we wanted bid, right? We wanted to lower, and, and, and they basically said, they're where, they're where they have to be. So we went to the lower one, so we went to the following contract, got one bid, right? And didn't say.
Okay, so, so you answered the question, if you wanted the first one, and you're saying, wait till we reduce it by $30,000, whatever, like you went out ourselves, can we come a little closer, find a route, David, and they said they could?
They said where, what they said, where, we are, where we have to be, or we have to be, and that was him. So, yeah, we did.
They would not negotiate. Okay. Thank you, I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Mark.
The, the other question I would have is, does buying our own pumps and using our own electrician change any warranties to our project?
Absolutely not. No, there's nothing changed. And it's actually better, I mean, in my experience, do you?
Listen, my, my name.
Excuse me?
Use your mic.
It's actually a benefit for us to use our own in-house electrician anyways, because he's more aware of anything, what goes on, everything's coming from, um, uh, I don't know where, where, where it's coming from. But he'll be here and start to finish the project, it's a plus for us, you know, so.
Any other board comment? Should we call a question, or does anybody want to make a motion table?
I'll make the motion table. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second into table list on the next meeting. Is there any more discussion on that? Any public comment on that?
I just, I just will comment, I, never mind. We, we just seem to be making a big deal out of nothing, but.
Yeah, that's kind of.
I, I don't.
I'm sorry, but.
How about the.
Oh.
Have we wasted it?
Yes.
What's the $140,000? I mean, come on.
They just explained to me what you're doing.
Well, if one of them thinks the right way is the wrong way.
I, I think we made a point about the right way, and hopefully staff has the lesson. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm okay either way. I'm going to, I'm going to vote against the motion to table, but, um, you know, I think we, we can move forward, because that's what we're going to do eventually, once we do it the right way, uh, if we do table it. Uh, and delaying it doesn't really solve the problem, so I'm, I'm okay with, with not tabling it, so I won't support the motion, but that's kind of my comment on it. Any other board comment? Chris, you call a question on tabling the most, the, the, uh, item?
Supervisor Gilpin?
No.
Supervisor Bradson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradson? Supervisor here?
Yes.
President of the board?
No. The table failed. Uh, now we'll call a question on passing the motion to approve the RFP.
Supervisor here?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradson?
No.
Supervisor Bradson?
Yes.
President of the board?
Yes.
Excuse me, point of order. I do have a question. It's too late now. Once again, this is for David. David, uh, Mark Campbell, president. Can the president, not to figure on you, can the president say prior to the vote what he is going to vote, state your name, before the rest of the board has voted?
Yeah, we're, we're in a public meeting. So yes, it's, it's part of his, it's part of his comment.
Okay. He doesn't, he voted at the end, when they're taking the vote, he's the last vote.
Understood. It's like, are we saying there's some sort of improper discussion?
No, I'm not, no, not at all. I'm saying that he said, like, how he was already going to vote prior to the, taking the vote, and he is the last vote, I believe.
And that's perfectly okay?
I think it's not influencing the vote, I believe.
Anybody can say how, what they're going to support or not support. That's the whole point of, of the board.
He said, I believe, said who's going to vote.
He said he was going to, yeah, vote.
I'm sorry, but not going to support.
Was not going to support. At his house.
Okay. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2020-0828-24, a resolution of the Sunlight District Improvement District to approve the format of the request or proposal for golf management service. Is there a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Okay, then move in second. Any more discussion, or did we get a summary from staff? Chris, on the process that we've gone through here?
Yes, sir. Good morning. Last Monday, Supervisor Gilpin, myself and Omar met to review the draft that was presented to the board the last meeting. We put together a timeline for the process on page one. It, it differs a little bit from my initial timeline, um, with about a couple of weeks that we're looking at maybe. So, uh, once the RFP is approved, we will start the advertising process, and, uh, we will, you know, email the information to potential bidders. And October 1st, we will have a pre-bid meeting, with October 13th being the request for additional information deadline, and then October 15th would be any responses due, and then October 27th would be the bid opening. So once the bids are open, we will know, of course, um, how many bidders we have, and we can bring that to the board on November 13th for discussion on how to move forward with the process. And we can also have a special meeting at any point that we need to during the process.
I'd like to go through it. I have some questions on things.
Yeah?
Absolutely.
That's what we're here for.
I don't, you want me just to go where I am with?
Can you move the mic to the phone, sir?
Well, I, I have one question. Are we going to, huh?
They can't hear you. They can't hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me?
Come on, sir.
I got too much crap.
That's it.
Hello? Uh, it's not in here, and maybe it shouldn't be in here, but my general question would be, one of the problems we've always had with Caster is that we don't know what anybody's making. And we always thought that was unfair, at least to my knowledge, or some of us thought it was unfair, that we didn't have that information. So I'd like, whether we, if we go with a different company, I'd like to know what everybody that we're paying, uh, salaries for, or, uh, what they're making. But we don't have that information, is that correct? I'm right in what I'm saying, right?
No, so on page, please, uh, part of the proposal requirements, and that starts on page twenty-seven. So, page twenty-seven references the proposal content of all the items that they have included, which includes transmittal letter, executive summary, qualifications in the company, key personnel. One of the sections included here, I'm trying to find it, it's, uh, page thirty, page twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
Yeah. There's a section that states staffing plan. So the part of the staffing plan that we are, um, requesting is that they have to provide a number of full-time and part-time employees that help us separate them from food operations and golf operations. They also have to give us qualifications for each of those positions, and they have to give us a salary range. So we don't know exactly what the salary will be, but we'll know what the criteria for that position is.
So why can't we know, why can't we know what the salaries are? We pay it.
Well, I said, no, our people on the business will have it even higher than for them.
I guess I'm imagining it before this process is done, will we have the ability to see what people are making that we're paying for?
This gives us the ability to see that, and as a range.
I don't want a range, I want to know how people are making.
I know.
We pay that.
I know, but you, you're asking something in a, a future, this is, it's difficult to, to determine exactly what each person would be making, you know, six months in advance. Um, but this gives us a range.
No, you're saying at the time.
At the time of hire, hire.
Time that they put them, what is their anticipated salary?
Yeah. Now, I think we could do that part of the contract negotiation.
That, that would have to be contracted.
Once we've ordered RP.
Well, I guess I'm bringing it up because I would like to include it. I'd like to know where our money's going and who it's going to. And I think that would be a fair request. So wherever it needs to be put in, I would like for it to be put in. Okay, let me try to clarify the point of that, because I, I agree, I think the point, the place to put that would be in the contract.
Yes, sir.
Not in the RFP.
Which is fine.
Once we have decided on who, based on the salary range that they give us, as, as criteria. You put it in the contract, but the question is, then, do they need to come back to us every time they give somebody a merit raise, or they're lost a living wage, something, or they're not gonna have approval, or is it whatever they're paying instead?
Well, I think we can be, just make it specific, where they do it the same way we do in the budget process. If you ask the list out, employee, well, position, and salary, we make it a crystal clear in the general fund for each employee. And we can make that criteria of, during the budget process every year, we want to see the numbers there for upper conditions.
Chris, we know how much we pay our employees.
Right.
But we don't know how much we pay cash.
Correct.
Well, I would think that's a fair request. We should know exactly what we pay it.
That's what I'm saying, I, I think we need to make it specific to say, we want their format to be matching the district format, which is specific to say.
Once a year, you update salary.
Sorry.
I mean, there isn't necessarily a check to cover the salaries, we just know where that money's from. And who it's from. That's what I was trying to get on that.
Just, just stand up, I mean, I, I agree with that, but I'm not talking to anybody about it, you know, Mark, but I'd like to know. You know, if we don't, if they won't give us exactly what they make, I wanna go down into administration. And so we know, the top four or five, how much it costs them. Because to me, that's where you can save a lot of money in your company. You know, service, but we need to know, and I, I particularly don't need to know how much Mike makes, but I need to know how much Mike, everybody else that I consider the administration, what cost they cost us. But I, I agree with the way it becomes me, but we need to go down. Instead of just, just giving a, a number of, uh, in January, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in, in payroll. I, to me, that doesn't work.
And this, this involves through the Caster, Caster's the one that we decide to stay with. I expect that, they just, going forward, they could have bigger Mr. Money, you know, that sort of thing. That should be a consideration. I, I think the staff agrees with that, that is something we can put in practice on the RFP, that's a good point. Okay? The other one, I don't know how specific we did, we go to page eleven, eleven on the golf course. I, I mean, these are all little minor details, I mean, the practice facility, a fifteen-foot body weight, that's just not true. I don't think anybody knows something except that. We have two practice running rooms, not one. I mean, again, I don't know if these are important, may change as well, or, or not.
We can make that change.
I got a little confused on page thirteen, if somebody could explain the, the second paragraph about, uh, PGA, LPGA, Class A, professional, and all that stuff. Is that just Caster?
So that's pretty standard, it looks like you're trying to match in, uh, golf operations, which is page fourteen. We have to specifically say for a Class A member of the Golf Operations Superintendent Association of America. So in order to be consistent in Pro Shop, I believe that was a intent or a, an assumption that we made that we wanted a PGA pro inside of Pro Shop, sometimes out of the face, sometimes it wasn't. So now we're just specifically saying that this is what we want in both.
What do we have in that?
We want.
Well, what do we got now? Are we talking, is this Andy we're talking about, that is it? Andy, Andy. Huh? I mean, we're saying we want PGA, LPGA, Class A, professional. Is that for Andy, or why would that?
On staff. That's amazing.
Right, so you, you, you couldn't be that, that Mike has a qualification, so Mike will receive the Pro Shop and the golf.
Then, but Andy is not, in class A, professional, right?
Correct. I just want to put Andy here to make the, so some, some other companies may come in with a general manager that's not a PGA pro, but the Pro Shop staff member has to be a PGA class A member. So it's just giving you a specific, every one of each, one of you guys, we have that designation.
And who came by to?
This is for a million other RP's, and then once again, we already had vision for golf operations, for the superintendent, okay? So we just saw, I think we need to be consistent throughout. Okay.
I just wanted to comment, just, just so you guys have a fact, I personally am a Class A PGA, um, number. Andy is considered a Class B, which is basically a professional.
Can you clarify what the difference is, and what Andy would need to become a Class?
So, and he would need to, um, finish one through, basically the regional portion of, uh, uh, the PGA process to become a Class A member. It's, it's a franchise program, basically.
And what, what is the best that would have a Class A protection?
I mean, there's, there's several, I, I'm not prepared to listen, I'm going to, uh, for the side of somebody that's, uh, been qualified as, as you would see other businesses as far as teaching, merchandising, uh, law operation manager, practice manager, uh, term manager, all those specifics, which is basically qualified processors in other industries.
What is it to be a Class B, and you want to become a professional?
Um, you, I mean, not anybody can just be qualified, no, but he, if he's qualified, he's basically, not necessarily difficult. He, he, you sign it up, and it's a good start in the process, um, but there is a few qualifications he.
You do have it, it is now pass the player ability test before you can, or didn't you PGA program?
Okay.
Or just, yeah, to get into the program, and then pass the player ability, now you can get pass the player ability before you can get into the program.
So you do have to pass the player ability test, yeah?
Yes, and, and if we don't have a Class A professional, can a Class B professional grow into a Class A professional? Or do they have to be with a younger Class A professional to be able to do that?
You can do it both ways.
I, I think originally, Neil, that was, it was rooted that way, because Andy wasn't a Class A professional. So they kind of put it under umbrella, so, because Jim Kurtz, who he was, I mean, they all were. But originally, it was Andy's supposed to be a Class A.
Is Andy actively pursuing Class A?
Yes, yes, I did, I was one of the other professionals, I'm a fan.
I just, I just wanted to bring it up, because I don't want to put you in here that's gonna hurt Caster, if we go forward with Caster. So are you guys okay with this?
Yeah, I, I, I definitely urge all professionals in the industry, I'm a strong opponent of the, of the PGA, so.
Yes.
Okay, I, I would like to see that, I saw. Um, I'm definitely not in control of ordering this RFP, but that is something personally, means a lot to me, so I encourage you to, to always try and.
Okay, I, I would try to, because I, I, you had to have a wide say on staff, so the others should be able to control it.
I think the question is, where it says the proposal shall include in the staffing plan for post-sapping in the Pro Shop by season. I, I mean, is that what it says? We can take that out, I think.
I might just, you know, there's too many letters, I get confused, PGA, LPGA, Class A, I just want to make sure it's fair, that's all. I'm good. Do you want to go to page fourteen, or this one's where? No, I'm not far from it. Is, is Class A membership, would you say?
Realistically, I would say, it would be a couple of years, you can do it faster, and you can do it slower, but realistically, it would probably.
Thank you. Realistically, he hasn't even really attempted to do it. I mean, we all know it, and, and that's not negative, I'm just saying.
So, uh, that's not, that's not, of course, so Andy has classes for every test, he has gone to, uh, a level one seminar, and is currently working at his level one portfolio, um, three levels, just, yeah.
Okay. Page fourteen, very first paragraph, I got confused, what it says, all lake and pond maintenance performed by the district. I, I didn't know that the district performs lake and pond maintenance.
So we have a third party.
Not a golf course.
We have a third party that we're involved with, on maintenance, so it's simple, so we make sure to that RP that little Caster, or whoever it is, isn't gonna be responsible for maintaining or putting any pesticide or chemicals inside the lakes and ponds.
Really? That's a good. That's a good. May I ask a sidebar question? What, what is our problem, why, how are the lakes look like crap? When was the last time we gave them any attention? Monthly.
It's a monthly service.
We have a monthly service like that. I would, I would check out, obviously do the spraying, to do, I mean. I don't see, the color of the water is, and the growth is, I would maybe check out, do a business with. Uh, the company that we use, been in business in Florida for a long time, and they're very, um, I mean. You'd probably care, you'd probably care to see the lakes from the optis where you play, or if you go back to where the restaurants are. The lake, the color of the water is kind of. Okay, well, when I look at my wallet, that's giving that shit. And, and that's the color of the lake, so. Oh, but, I mean, um. Take the, take the, we have, is very good, and I know that, Michael, I know you guys do them in the past, on, on other courses, um, you know. I mean, yeah, you're gonna get green, I mean, you know, explore. They're not doing it every month. It's, yeah. You gotta tell the guys who run the golf course, Caster, because they have no proof. Okay, all right, I'll deal with that, I'll, I'm back. Okay. I'd like a clarification on that, because I just did a course over with Mike and Earl, and we were talking about the wall on the ponds. Now, are we segregating, because Earl's talking about needing to do the work on that wall on Turtle. Um, is that not the lake maintenance? Or are we arguing that that's really not the lake maintenance, that's the wall maintenance? Separates the golf course from the lake, so it's a golf course. Uh, I think we need to be careful about how we word this in the RFP, so that clarity is to who's responsible. Because by re, we're gonna maintain the lake, that would seem to me that that would include the boundaries of the lake, which you do the seawall. What wall are you talking about?
Just on like, number one. So on Turtle, if, 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 and it doesn't tell us that that's a safety hazard during a capital project, or in the process, unless that collapses and the green goes out, we're gonna say that's lawful protection, right? So I don't think on either side, that would come into play on this, because that, that's a safety concern, and once again, it's a liability if you wear your back glasses and that wall goes down.
Well, who's responsible for repairing, is the question. Well, this would, this would indicate the district's responsible for. And we, and we don't afford it, yeah. So. So the district would do it as. Yeah, the last time we repaired on number one, the district did, they are a company of.
We did it during golf capital, though.
Oh, I'm handling capital, but I know that.
But who, we were, this is actually regarding all the water's volume itself, and getting it all sprayed, we'll, we'll make that one.
Yeah, I mean, this question, this, this question of, obviously, it's, it's over the price, and it's gonna be a capital expense that we have to pay for, but we can, the way it's currently worked, it looks like the district is going to be the workers to close the golf operation. And I assume whoever's in charge of the golf course is really gonna wanna oversee the work, who has impact on the golf.
Yes, I'll make that clarification.
Uh, on renewal terms, I know it says, we're gonna discuss it upon coming into an agreement with somebody. Do we, will this be a later conversation when the board decides what we want to do for the renewals, say, one year, five years, whatever? We'll do that at the point. Okay. On page twenty-one, on the capital improvements. Uh, I don't know why we took this out, is, is expected that the proposal shall recommend all such improvements and such expense will be expensive to district? Who is gonna recommend capital if they don't?
So they will still be responsible for, you know, creating annual capital improvement plan as part of the budget process, so that's almost the last sentence. The only reason we took out that sentence is because it was the expense of the district. So, based on some of our conversations, based on the operating leases, we tailored this RFP to make it specific where this company will now be responsible for recording capital projects and the leases. We will give them one subsidy going forward, in that way, buying through all, and more in line with what you guys are asking for. There won't be an expense of the district.
So we don't, so they're not gonna tell us what they think needs to be done?
Oh, of course, in part, but the same way they do now. The only thing that's just not expensive to district is gonna be expensive to the club, and then we'll subsidize that through the subsidy.
I think we should keep them in the sentence where it says, it is expected that the proposal shall recommend all such improvements.
Yeah.
Keep that there.
Yeah.
We want to.
The same, the same thing on the next page with the equipment, we took it out too. Aren't they supposed to tell us what equipment they need? First paragraph says included, divided by the proposal at the expense of the district that came into the equipment.
So it says, first, first half of that says, any of the optional operating, so the only thing we're changing is that it's an additional expense. We're saying it's gonna be a golf course expense, that's the only word you're taking out, additional expense, fortunately. So every year, you do the same capital plan, a five-year capital plan, there's no change in such additional expense and all that we're dealing. I just don't like to pick that, I want to pick that, because we want them to be responsible for the cause, and we're gonna subsidize that later on. But we want them to account for that cost, that's what you've been asking me to do over the last year and a half. It's preventing reward operating, and preventing doing the project, and preventing you do it, without overdoing it.
Essentially, that will allow the, possibly, because the company allows possible leasing of the equipment to be borne by the golf course instead of that.
Correct.
So, so it'll be recorded in the operation.
It was recorded in the operations of the golf course, correct.
Who came up with this, uh, on page thirty-six, who came up with this point system? Who changed it? Why was it changed?
So during, I mean, it would probably be easier to go off a one system, so you reoutlier the structure of what, what the weight for your guys to read at a working level, but we did go a hundred percent to a point system, so, um, part of this process is that a valuation committee will take all the RP and rank them according, so we'll take some percentages from fifteen to ten points. Uh, and it increases the E, the thirty-one, and the pro forma, and other kinds of considerations of everything.
So, what, what's, let's say you get ten companies that fit, I'm a little confused, buddy. If you get ten companies that fit, are we gonna just look at the, the high score, and the elements get thrown out, or how, how do you think?
Technically, you can, let's say we create a community of five members, those five members will rank their same. Technically, you can have, let's say we create a committee of five members. Those five hundred will rank those same companies. And then the top three is all we're going to look at. Earl and I have two and three ranking. It's not, unless it's more than question, we're partly not limited to just low rankings. So like over the rating system, we're determining who's getting a big number, who's not, whether they're bottom, got some sort of ranking system to kind of narrow the field down.
How many things we think are going to fit?
We don't have a team the last time. I'm voting for more.
Last time we had an architectural, uh, review, I think we had like eighty, ten architects. We had to go through the same ranking process and we brought three top one to give you a presentation at a board meeting. We didn't give you all eight.
This is kind of a, I don't know if I want to put a number on it. It's kind of a big decision.
We don't have that. We don't have that.
No, I understand. I'm just talking amongst ourselves.
I don't, this doesn't, this doesn't give you the number of how many you guys are paying. This is just going to rank them. It gives you some sort of basis as to how they got ranked. Right? So you'll know, okay, there was ten bidders and little Caster was number one, so it was number two. But you don't know how we came up with that conclusion. But the reason is give you all ten without any.
So for example, I sit on the procurement committee for Highlands County. And the procurement committee will see bids for architectural services and different professional services. I had forty-five proposals to review and rank as part of that committee for different categories. So they can come up with a library system. So you, you know, you can't obviously afford and see forty-five different proposals, you know, in one meeting. So they establish a committee. So it's a ranking system and the higher ranking, um, proposers would be of course, you know, looked at during the process.
Well, I would assume that the five board members would be part of this process. Is that just a head of subject?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the evaluating criteria. It shows if we have an interview panel. If, if we as a board done it to do the interviewing of each of these proposals, they would have to be in public meetings or.
Yeah. What's wrong with that?
I.
This is kind of a big decision. You don't think?
Well, I, I don't disagree. And that was one of my comments that I was going to make before we threw, I think the Russian is scheduled to give the essentially.
I mean, I know these guys, if they found out that I was going to represent the board and making this decision, these guys would go into car and marry me if he hold. We would have the board. They'd die. And I would do the same way as they did. I think all five board members should be included.
And, and what's possible is we have an interview panel that have one board member on it to be a part of the representative group. But we'll be looking at ranking the people and bringing the top contenders to the board.
I can't go with that. I am totally opposed to that. As they would be with you. Who is selected?
Well, if the one board member is going to do the selection.
What, what, what?
I'd like to recommend, let's see how many proposals we receive and then allow the board to talk through that process.
Well, we can't do that because the R F P states that there would be a panel.
I put a shit panel or. I believe it was just restricted to a panel.
So they, the panel will give you a ranking system. Like I say, it's ten companies and we give you a ranking system top three. And you take the top one, you all, and you have a certain company that's not ranked in the top three. You have that ability to recommend the board. How would I see a company X also be the board? There's nothing for including the board.
I'm not saying the board, the board, the last thing on our needs. This project should be above board and every meeting should be public. Third, we're talking about a serious situation here. A management company running the restaurant and running the golf course. There should be no secret meetings. There should be no.
What is secret meeting?
Not secret meetings.
All we're doing is having.
There should be no power down of one, of, of, of the list by one board member and no offense, Tanya, and yourself. That's ridiculous.
That doesn't have to be us. Change that.
Well, if you remind, I think we'd have a.
I'm trying to make it from the public, you know, make it.
I just think the board's, the board's responsibility to do point decisions. You guys don't agree with that?
It could easily be a two hour meeting with every group arguably more. Somebody has to allow them to see the facilities. So we're not going to tour them as a public meeting on the golf courses so they can see what they're bidding on. Uh, we're not going to meet with them, uh, when they're asking questions. But at the point that they give a proposal and we have a proposal to look at, every interview process for each group is going to be a minimum of two hours, I would say, going through the details of their proposal. And if you have ten groups, you're talking several hours of public meeting with the board just on this process. And what the, the panel process is designed to do is eliminate the lesser groups and just bring the top groups to us for review as a board in an open meeting. And if.
Well, who made this decision?
Who made what decision?
What you're saying.
Nobody's made that decision yet. That's what the R F P state, that's the plan that the R F P calls for. And if we as a board don't like the plan, we can change it.
Well, I can agree to that. That's my vote. If that's, if that's in here, I, I misunderstand it. I would take it with the other group's vote.
So you, you would like a public meeting for everybody who puts in an R F P?
I just.
Let me, let me clarify. That's what you're asking for. I'm just trying to clarify. Is that what you're asking for? You want a public meeting where we have a discussion with every one who sends an R F P back with their proposal to manage the golf courses? You want a public meeting with the board?
If that's the only way I have, yeah, fine. Yeah, that's what I want. Why not? Why do we hide it?
We're not hiding anything. We're trying.
Well, if we, if we do it, if we do it behind a different way, it's going to appear. I, I'm just.
There's, there's no danger of appearance here. It's, we have a panel who familiarizes themselves with the process and looks for what we're looking for and ranks us the best contenders. And if in reviewing the best contenders, we don't find somebody we want, we can ask the panel to dig deeper. But if.
Well, put it out again. If I were you, would we get to see all the proposals?
You can see all of them. Why can't you?
Can't you always do?
All of it, public information, all the.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, the problem is done for every R F P for services, architectural, engineering, it's always been done.
All right. I got one more. Let me just go through my, 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 before we leave, because I'm going to shut up because this is before we leave. Can we not individually review each proposal and rank them in our estimation, how they should, and submit that to whomever?
As a, the committee got five board members, yes, you could submit it to me.
I will. All of us are going to take every, all the proposals and write them as we see.
Yes.
And submit that information to that panel.
To me, and then it will be come public.
This is a four and a half million dollar decision. But it's not something to be taken lightly. I got one more question and then you guys.
Wait a minute.
Go for it.
We got to clarify that last point because I'm not.
What? Four and a half million?
No, we. I'm, I'm just not sure of the process there under the sunshine on us. We can have conversations with you on something that's going to come to the board. But we can't be advised of what the other members of the board think prior to a public meeting.
Prior to a public, yes, correct.
So we can, we can give those determinations to you, but what the heck can you do with them? Um, if, if we, because we, we can't know what the other board members are saying.
Correct. So what we would do for the next board meeting, we would, let's say the committee is, is all the board members plus the official five people. We would submit all the rankings into a spreadsheet and provide the board copies of, of all the rankings. I mean, that's what we do. But it has to be, the first time that you see it would be, uh, once we post it on the website and, and the board packets.
I would argue that if you're putting it in the board packets before the public meeting, you're letting me know what the other board members have said before a public meeting.
I don't know that the evaluation criterias will have names on them either.
Yeah, we could keep that. We could keep it anonymous. This is a group number, you know, there's five board members and five other people on the committee. The, the environmental submit their evaluation criteria and it would be anonymous, basically be anonymous. And then when they're actually at the discussion, you can say, well, this is how I ranked it because now we're in a public meeting. But the information that goes out as far as a ranking matrix, basically, so it would end up being a ranking matrix. Saying they know there was a total of ten, uh, people that provided rankings and here's the things those ten are. You don't know who any of those two, two supplied any of the rankings.
I, I hear your argument. I think, you know, I.
I'm going to reflect an opinion from the attorney general before we.
It's definitely not a normal process. That is not a normal process. I agree one hundred percent. Sir.
In fact, what I would recommend is obviously all of the supervisors are allowed to have copies of the bid. What I would do is just make your own internal rankings and keep those to yourself. And then when we have the actual public meeting about the top, you know, three or five, whatever we decide, the, the, the number that you're, you're going to consider. You can say, oh, well, I looked at my rankings and the person I ranked highest isn't in this list. And so now I want to make sure that that person gets included. That would be the time to do that.
I think that would be a much better way to go.
The big issue is how many people are in this. That's what it comes down to. I think that would be the decision to make is how many bids are we going to review in public meeting? Because if you say, oh, we're going to bid, we're going to review three and we get, only get five bids, you know, you're really only dropping two people.
Right.
So like if we, you say you're going to review three, can we get ten? Now you might make, make a, you know, revise or think.
So if, if you're okay with that concept, so we have, we still have a panel. The board gets to review all of the processes individually and provide our own ranking. And we can discuss that at a public meeting when the board receives the recommendation from the panel. So we can still make changes. And I think we can resolve this at one. But if that's still not an acceptable resolution, I need to know.
Why can't we just come in and discuss? Why do we have to do all this secrets? Why, why just can't we come into a board meeting and discuss things? They, I, I, they don't have to be here. Why can't we just discuss it? I mean, the expenses for the golf, uh, in the restaurant are four and a half million dollars. We're going to take ten hours to do this correctly. It's not a big deal.
I'm, I'm, I'm saying this target. I don't, I don't want to be.
Don't want what?
I don't want to be. I think this should be made, this decision should be made by the five supervisors. And Tanya, and Omar. Um, because I'm, I've seen some of the stuff we've done. We, we have a panel and it's, and they, they have influence. It's people that I would have put on the panel. I mean, maybe that's the way to do things in, in twenty twenty. We got, I had some stuff, made a decision to move to some lake and start playing golf and you're making decisions like this. It, it's not what I think. It should be done by the five supervisor. The decision should be made there. And if it's, if it's the five supervisors doing the evaluation, then we do it. But I, I don't, I don't like the idea of people that, that are great and in a community making decisions like this. This is, supervisor should do this.
I, I agree. The supervisors will make the final decision. It's a question of how we're going to narrow the list. And again, supervisors can individually review everyone and bring that to a public meeting. And maybe, maybe the solution is that we have to go have a panel, that the R F Ps come in, supervisors all get the R F Ps. We have a public meeting where we discuss the whole group of R F Ps and our rankings of them. And tell staff that, that these are the three, that we can decide on the top contenders and the one board member back there. I think there's kind of a backwards.
My, my reading is wrong. It says here on November thirty. Dispatching at board meetings will review qualified proposers to determine if the committee should be formed. The recommendations throughout the evaluation process to be formed by the board.
That is correct. So in the R F P itself, I would recommend where it says panel, maybe we can take panel or other appropriate method. Just in the R F P to handle that part of it. And then on November thirteen, you will see every single proposal. And then the board can decide at that point, if there's only two, what do you want to do? If there's fifteen, what do you want to do as a board? So that's, that's what we, yes, sir. That's correct. So would you want us to change our additional wording to the R F P where it says panel or other appropriate method as determined by the board supervisors?
I would.
I would.
Yeah. Because I think it's just, it's just very complicated though. Our five supervisors make a decision like this with who the ones.
All right. We'll make that change. We'll make that change in our R F P.
We're making that change. You're okay with the point?
Yeah, those are all together and we're going to do it. That's all I can do. Okay. Well, I got two other things. Uh. There was no spot. Uh. So on that page thirty-six, that same line, or that same, the next last paragraph. Although the proposers by national projection will be one consideration, the primary consideration will be based on the overall quality and responsiveness to this proposal. I don't like that one.
And it's kind of a point system as well.
I just. Responsiveness to this proposal.
No, it's, it's there. The, the, you're causing a hard time to find this information to be a proposal. Probably not somebody who wants to.
Well, I just think we need to rework, I mean, financially, I think it's a big deal.
I'm, I'm just thinking that if we got a point system and if that's an overriding consideration, then it should be part of the point system.
Does that last sense really need to be in there at all? We're not going to be looking at all of that.
Yeah.
That'd be fine if it took that.
I agree. The financial and the overall responsiveness of our, of our proposal would be quite obvious. If they not doing enough time and manner, they're not going to be wanting it. And if they, if they, if their financials are very bad, then we're not going to let that in. I think. Why do we need to, why does that?
That would.
I mean, I'm agreeing with you there. I don't want to report.
One last thing, you got to go back to page twenty. I may be the only one that believes in this. So you guys got to let me know. We took out proposed incentives. I honestly believe that one of the policies we have with Caster is that they're responsible for not financial. And I know we had a financial agreement with somebody two years ago in November twenty. And that's not to say a financial agreement or incentive, excuse me, is not the right way to go. You've just got to do the right type of proposal. I believe in incentives for companies to perform. They don't all have to be statistical. They can be objective. It could be a combination. It could weigh any way we want. But to give a company a check that's four and a half million dollars every year and hold them responsible for not one nickel of it, I think is wrong. So we had it in there, you know, that incentives would be considered. I would just like to see it put back in and see what we get.
So we removed it from the title. So the strike removed the title, which we call management and proposal incentives. And then you read the yellow. The last sentence says, other fee arrangements included for not limited to revenue sharing, black people around and additional incentive clause will also be considered.
Where's, I'm sorry, where's that yellow?
So what we did is we allowed them to come in with whatever they thought was better their company. We're not going to limit them to just like, and it'd be incentive. We want to see what you have to bring to the table, whether that be out of town or whether it's not. We kind of gave them a whole broad spectrum as to what they can come back and, and give a proposal on. But if it's an incentive clause, they can build into their proposal if they'd like.
Okay.
And if they have any incentive, it's where we can put in the contract.
Yes, okay. Yeah, that's fine. Okay. I thank you. Yes that's fine okay I thank you that's all I got. Okay. Okay are you ready? No I'm ready. Yeah. Right. Okay any comments on that?
Yeah.
Okay. The wire?
We're all okay with that. To even make any residence I'm trying to make this sound on but good morning and thank you for what you guys do that um I think it was you sir that said
Mike.
You said that um you did what were you saying about that decision for the living large?
That was great.
That was great. About uh not having outside of the supervisor that I said it's a ceremony that there's a that public meeting happened that there are public comment available.
You you kind of have a public meeting.
And that will be like kind of saying publicly available as all of the music I mean I'm sure a lot of people won't do that but people that are aware that have to have public we should be here and we will allow or really be nullified in public of all that they do.
Yeah you're you're not commenting on anything because it's all public.
I'm sorry it just wasn't me I wasn't
I just didn't want some decision made that would more more difficult for me you have the right to question or vote anything.
And is it possible do you want the public to vote regarding the panel or committee I heard one of you said not going to have a panel but that the people here can part that decision because why have yeah why have a panel and you all don't know what you're doing there it's only you here to know what you're doing and if you want to have a panel I would say had a resident department panel it's really taking to do that aren't you all going to break up without a panel? This is just public comment. All right thank you Greg.
The one the one point I would like to say is two points of interest the first one is whether or not this schedule is realistic if we're if we're going out with the RFPs we're ahead of the RFP nine ten to nine seventeen we'll email information to the vendors between nine ten and nine thirty so first they've got to find out about it then they've got to prepare their proposal and you're going to have a pre-bid meeting on October first where I assume everybody who really wants information can come to that meeting and then they are less than two weeks put their proposal together is that
One more.
I'm sorry sorry.
One more. Um the date of meeting is on October twenty seventh.
Yeah I'm sorry the RFI RFAI deadline oh they've got two weeks to request additional information I'm sorry.
Oh two weeks yes sir two weeks to request.
And what's the deadline deadline?
October fifteenth.
What what does that mean?
What that means is that we respond to the request for information and we post it online for the vendors to see that's the response the district that's our deadline district response deadline.
Okay I'm I'm not sure what I what are we responding to.
Request for questions or additional information related to the bid.
And then they got until October twenty seventh to get their get their bids.
Correct.
Okay. Okay so it gives them a month.
And I think if we need we need to like Chris says we can have we can have other more meetings I mean it's this is I think of even since Jan and I talked they extended it longer than the other meetings so it's getting we need to do it and if we have to have more meetings we just have to have
Okay.
Harold John.
Thanks for that clarification on schedule I guess the only other question I would ask him from what I'm hearing I think I know the answer but I just wanted to clarify um obviously we're getting into a project that is a big project with lots of work required lots of people as well as the board especially now that we're going to be kind of eliminating the panel probably um my sense in having watched this operation closely for a year and a half now is that whether it's Billy Casper or any other contractors we're probably going to have a lot of the same problems uh as a board um and there is merit in periodically finding out who else is out there that might be able to do the job and what can they offer but do we really feel strongly enough that we need to do that or do we want to table this RFP and continue with Billy Casper I just think we need to ask that question before we vote vote on the RFP.
We it's it's taking too much to get the year here.
I I understand that I'm just
Well I made a motion no or we don't.
Okay you don't have to make a motion I just been offering some discussion to be sure everybody's in agreement that we're going forward and had thought about this because we don't at this point we don't have to go with the RFP if we vote through the RFP we do so.
I I want to make the vote for the RFP.
I wanted to choose the RFP. Okay I think that's the the reading I was getting I just wanted to clarify for the record um okay any final moment? Any final board comment?
Yeah Jen we we will just be available to the vendors Monday Tuesday.
Anything we got for the lower harder?
Yeah I would say as soon as
Do we have
Yeah we have to start the advertising process.
How is that advertising process where are we going to get it this locally or?
Well we're going to go outside local so um I don't have a business firm name I would need to advertise several Florida newspapers and then we're going to look into any online publications any anything that we can do golf related we'll get it on there.
I would certainly encourage I second of course owners association is possible.
What was the name I'm sorry?
Uh it's the I I need to go listen to golf course D C golf game I think it's the C C A golf course owners association whatever the reason but uh but I I look to information I know that that will be something to remember that and that that would be a potential place that we could make a apply to them.
So the answer to my question is next Friday?
Well we're going to start the advertising process as soon as we can so we're going to submit the advertisement to a local paper it usually takes two to three days to be published um and then we go outside the market maybe Orlando Tampa or Miami I don't I don't know yet so in the next week.
Since September tenth that's what you just saw Eric but September tenth the actual date of being
In the newspapers or publications so again we start that process now so we can um submit the information to our to the newspapers.
Can you send me a copy we've got five RFPs change.
Supervisor.
I get it yeah.
Supervisor Grantson supervisor here.
Yes.
Supervisor Yelton.
Yes.
Commander Nellin.
Yes. Okay now we get into the expression item the first expression item is Barbara Calum.
It's kind of hard to agree maybe you know what we have I only can hear you.
Yeah it's not possible we can't hear you all the time.
I have you can use your laptop if you're loud when you want.
I'm literally reading the mic if you so.
I have portable unit that you can plug into your ear if you can't hear that'll help you if you live home just let it in and I'll get it for you.
Well it might be nice either the speakers reporting at us.
Unfortunately I have to set it up this way otherwise I get feedback so I mean I'm not going to be putting it on do you want all the units yes or no?
No.
No.
Well it's really important when they call it to the mic.
I don't need the unit uh here even though I have a good ear so I'm moving on that but when they turn their head and they're talking that way the mic won't hear that is a problem you need to kind of stay focused on the part of the mic.
Maybe I need to take this one next one.
This has been a this has been a concern for I don't know how many long meetings every meeting the speed in the light. You have the mic and it's almost falling off.
You got to be aware really rest of the other guys and it's talking and answering but your mom is right.
Well we go for that you guys have to come up with a mic and you go to speed we have to go away here you know I've just said it.
Maybe go up to the mic and repeat what I just said I mean what's happening to you?
No in the future I'd like to come up with a mic so we can hear it back now.
The rap is really correct you have public comment.
I'm sorry I'm just
Mark Cam that will be described resident been a concern but not only myself but many others that they cannot hear from the board therefore your meeting is useless if they can't hear what you're saying as we brought up numerous times we understand this is a problem with some of the equipment here but it would help instead of talking this way looking out the door or that way maybe speaking into the mic that would help people so they can hear thanks for your time I'm sorry I didn't come up with anything like to do my comment. Mark Phil my representative resident uh this this microphone speaker and problem hearing for the audience has been a long going deal now we just heard that you can't put the speakers back in you get feedback that's a question I've heard about that I've been here a long time that's the first time so maybe we should have remote speakers maybe we should invest in a sound system so the audience out here can hear everybody and understand it's a very simple request in a multi-billion dollar business here.
Okay back to the original expression item which is the speed bumps on Barbara Calum um if we can get a discussion from that actually the
All right you all um let me get this closer to you you all have been working for you um encouraged by the speed we have suggested yes to put them in um by horse uh as we possibly three thousand dollars we do most of the work in-house you have purchased speed bumps uh um we have suggested that we need them the residents want they have a decision on here they were here last uh last meeting so we would let them in because it is a uh a problem.
Okay my my question is with the agenda for speed cushions the uh summary for speed pumps I would like to clarify what kind of device you're talking about.
Um over to preserve we have a speed cushion um on the team there's speed bumps all the speed that we all the feedback feedback that we get that the speed pumps cover the whole world the speed cushion industry is a uh there's a few being in agreement people try to um uh go around or you know so in my opinion and um the people that um write over them they feel that the speed bumps are safer.
What we have on that the the Seastreet California bumps.
And we also have behind the canvas there's the only person we had had the cushions in in the preserve I mean absolutely they have a lot they do you know I mean you might want me to do that um and the price is not you know there's there's no difference in price um Edgewater or Southwest speed bumps um you know I have I have complaints about the speed cushions but complaints about everything so you know we can't run them all.
I I would add some things to the speed cushions I could I could make an argument with the speed cushions on the the major roadways because one of the reasons for cushions is you know it's a vehicle but I think in the strictly residential communities the speed cushions are just overkill you know and the the speed bumpers and the speed tables would be my preference wherever we go what's the difference in cost between sweet speed bump and the speed table?
There's not much it's a couple hundred dollars for a
You mean speed tables might be a little much?
Like asphalt.
No it's very expensive.
No 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 that doesn't have asphalt.
Why are you wasting my time?
They started talking about asphalt.
I thought you thought I wanted to hear.
No I was talking about the difference in cost between the asphalt speed.
Oh they're about sixty seven thousand dollars um to put one in like on um uh like in Columbus they have them they're sixty seven thousand dollars.
Honestly I'm sure more than that.
Well that's that's what it's happening what makes the most cost effective and um still does the job so you're talking about the speed bumps like the the plastic yellow
Yes exactly.
Speed bumps that's what they're being recommended.
Yeah and there's really no maintenance for most of the building um you know that I mean they were
I'd like to ask why are we discussing the the speed bumps to me if this district manager cannot along with her meeting the criteria if she can't make that determination then we've got her responsibilities wrong we shouldn't be wasting our time talking about speed bumps.
And I disagree with you completely on that credit we had that meeting of the board meeting that I was in on because we don't want speed bumps everywhere in the world.
And that's what that's what we're paying her to do. I would think as a district manager she should be able to control that I mean if she's not controlling it then we go back and have to explain to her what the criteria is. I mean the only ones we really have to see are the ones that are not approved.
I agree.
Policy reading the board on the current policy tables.
Well we've made that point I know that it's a policy so. It's taken two and a half months there's something wrong with our policy maybe it takes that long to get this done.
The policy was set by the board.
Stop it.
Well it's what it was set by we're all going to the policy changing and and that's fine.
For our for our defiles us for our for our board that set the policy.
Well thank you.
Absolutely we we concerned the policy earlier this year so we were all on that board.
It should have taken two and a half months to decide that we're going to do that I guess we never figure out the best way it's kind of
Normally it would be faster that would be bad timing because we only have meetings every four weeks in the summertime so that's that's why it took longer than I don't think the process is flawed uh it did take longer than we would have expected um but I don't I don't think we want to just let the general manager decide where speed bumps are going to be I really I feel strongly that that should be a board decision.
And the plus in that and you're right because what happens if Jania says no or whoever in the right says no either one what they're going to do is they're going to come back to the board is going to throw one throw one.
Or they can say yes to everything so that we don't have any
Right well then we got the wrong district manager. I disagree with that but
Well I I do have one serious question have we told the people on the street where we plan to put them?
We marked them off yes yes.
So the the people
Where we're going to put them.
Do the people who live there know where they're going?
Yes well they should we marked them in paint no they're here to be right.
I just want to make sure it stays working.
The community has to have a lot of involvement in what's going on there, or should be involved. And that's for...
And there's going to be a lot more to secure that again, if that is something that the board wants to maintain. Absolutely. I'm looking at it, absolutely.
Okay. On the community and development plan, I think the thing on your is more a bid. I could care less if we do it last 2030, because if we did it this year, I think that'd be great.
But what does measure it? That you, what, do you, okay, you're going to turn it over to the commercial broker yourself? Is that the objective? I mean, is that, when you've accomplished that, you've completed the objective? To me, what's measurable on there?
Well, right now, if you don't sell it...
The sale would be immeasurable, but what I...
If it didn't sell, then you didn't achieve your objective?
Well, I think as far as getting it listed with the commercial realtor, broker, or on MLS, is really the first step of the process.
That's a task.
That's a task. It is a task. Our ultimate goal, you know, as a board would be to sell the property and to get the property back on the tax roll. So as, you know, as we go through this process, I'll be updating you through that process.
All objectives should have a measurable goal.
Correct.
As I see it, it's just a task that needs to perform in order to get on MLS?
I can afford that.
Okay. I'm going to go down the street again, that I am a strong believer that we have to do something to market Southern Lake as a place to come. We need to improve the number of residents that we have in Southern Lake, and we have to improve the golf membership. I think we need to be part of driving that bus, and you talked about all that should be in the developer's hands. We're not, in my opinion, we don't have a chance of getting a developer to come in and try to take over what's going on in Southern Lake. I think through actions of working with the county and through our own initiatives, that we should be able to sell Southern Lake as a golf community where people want to come and retire. There is all kinds of available lots within Southern Lake, not necessarily owned by Southern Lake, but owned by the county, that we can work with the county on helping people that want to come down here. And I just, if we don't do that, how do we expect to grow? And if we don't grow, we are not going to be able to afford to do the things that many think that needs to be done. So I think it has to be a primary objective first, that she puts a plan together on how we're going to grow Southern Lake. The district, how can we do that?
I agree.
And I think that if it has her to put that plan together, we can't do that.
I think that can be one of the bullets on the big community and development plan. I think that's a good, good statement. I'm not sure what that plan's going to look like yet.
Oh, I'm not sure either. If I knew what it was looking like, I would be more than happy to spill it out. I don't know what it is, but I know that something is going on within Southern Lake right now. When this southern living comes in and buys 59 lots, he doesn't do that because he doesn't think he can sell it.
Right.
I don't know that that, while that, those are going to be homes that provide us additional assessments. I don't know that they are the homes that are going to provide us additional golf memberships. They could, I don't, I just don't know. I know the houses are for lower income people, and I'm not saying that they're nice homes, but they're not... I guess I might, they're more affordable homes than a lot of the homes that are here in Southern Lake, let's put it that way. Based on what I'm hearing. And I'm glad that he's doing it, because we need more residents within Southern Lake. I just don't know if it's going to increase our golf membership. But if he can do it for 59 lots, we've got how many lots? And the county is going to be more than willing to help us sell whatever lots they, I mean, they got how many different lots from Southern Lake that are on the tax rolls that they're putting on the bid every other month, et cetera. So there's so many opportunities, and I strongly believe, again, that this pandemic is going to cause more people to want to come down here, be it just in the winter or period.
I agree 100%.
So I just, I guess I geeked that drum a bit, but...
Actually, really, to me, that's funny, you drop the switch. Because it's not just a yearly objective.
No, no.
This is a long-term, we're going to talk about this every year.
Yep.
I would put that, it was made, I mean, as a central question for the position.
But there should be measurable objectives against that, and you know...
Yeah, improvement.
Yeah, yeah, whether it's a, we're going to improve revenue by 10% or something, but it's going to be measurable, and it's something that has to be accomplished. And if we don't have the horses in place to do it, then maybe we need to change the horses. And I'm suggesting that to the person.
Right, and I agree. I mean, history shows as far as our community, that the people come here for lifestyle. They came here because maybe their friends were here, maybe their family was here, maybe it's affordable. But I think we all agree, and in talking to even the long-term residents here, that it wasn't specific to golf, but it was the lifestyle, whether friends, family, whatever the case is. And I think, I mean, that's, that's a big, we understand that not every, maybe 10% of the community might even play golf. So it is the community lifestyle.
But if we can get 10% increase out of the 60 people that come in, that's something. You know, it happens that we get 60 residents. But that's just one developer, if you will, or one builder, really. But we've got several of them that are, and they're telling me that their phone is ringing off the hook. The people wanting to come down here. And we need to get something out there for these people to come to Southern Lake.
I think developing the plan is the first objective, and I agree that the goal objective is to increase revenue. I'm not sure how we can put a number on that over too design. But I agree, maybe including that in the actual document description for having an objective to get that plan better and flexible to a good division.
Tell me, tell me about this utilities master plan. I'm not aware. What was it doing? What is it?
It's just a proposal that previous staff and associates have given me to take a look at. So the utilities master plan would be developed and presented in any event that we needed to secure a loan or the utility improvements that they want to want.
So this is all what?
We haven't had a master plan in 20 years.
I'm going to take a five-year delay with the building.
So all they've done is presented the proposal, all I'm doing is taking a look at it, and then I'll have updates for the board here in the upcoming weeks.
I would say that has an objective, that's true.
It's more of a task.
The funding that you live for, for the aquatic area by September 30th, I would assume, is that too quick? You've got a little available funding?
I just want to find out if there is available funding and what state or federal agency it would be from. I mean, that's the thing, is there anything available to us that we could have gone for? That's been the question to me now for a long time, and I think we need to try to find the answer to that.
Well, to me, that's a task, because when you present a recreation master plan to us, that should include the funding and everything. That, to me, would be what you would give all of it at once. From the bank? Now, here's, here's what it is, we do it all, this is what it'll cost. We do it, you know, A, B, and C, this is what A, B, and C will cost. That, to me, would be, that's a good objective. That, you know, you want to do that by December 2030 or whatever, that, to me, is good. I think we get a little bit of statistical responsibility in your, for your goals to mention. I mean, I think if the fishbait franchise company have, I'm thinking, $6 million in expenses, we should be all responsible to make sure that we come close to that secure. I mean, that's just my opinion. Same thing with the revenues. I shouldn't have to come here and ask you why the revenue is down. You guys should come and say, you gotta follow the revenue, what I'm going to make.
There is no problem with that.
Huh?
There is no problem with that.
Okay.
We'll talk about that later. So there's $300,000 less, $270,000 is fee more insurance. $280,000 last year we got a duty. $37,000 we got an insurance.
I'll check it out to make sure.
Yeah.
But when I asked last time, I still didn't get an answer. One last question then on the road. The current job evaluation form that we have on record, is that the one, are you going to look at that, make changes to it? Or is that the one you want us to do?
Do you have any thoughts for the employees?
Do you?
A lot of the employees.
Do you have any evaluation form that I think you gave us?
Okay.
Based on the conversations we've had on objectives and everything, are you happy with those evaluations forms the way they are? Or are you going to modify them or change them, or are those the ones we use?
Oh, those are the ones for all of you. What I've stated in my specific goals was the merit evaluation process for employees, that the forms that you have in your possession are good. Listen.
Go ahead. Anybody else have anything you'd like to add?
I just want to say that, just, I went over with Tanya, which I would recommend all supervisors do, when we get all this, I think, to talk to her a few more, and get a lot of impressions out of her. But I get to bring up global golf. When I saw that, I was like, whoa. That, I did not like that at all. There's still a misconception, I told Mike and Tanya both about, I would love to have an event here, but I want to make sure it makes money. And there's still a misconception that we lost 200 million to make money. The team that hurt cost us money for two years, and we never get bigger. So that's got to stop. I mean, I'm for making stuff. But we got to make money, or not do it, now is, I think it comes from money, that in a demand that you're not going to just take stuff for the second ticket. And I'm happy to see that, with outings and everything else. Because we do a lot of stuff that costs us money, which is reasonable. Which, which is going to get on you.
My understanding was that maybe in the Latin qualifiers, both of them are maybe about $50,000.
It's great. It's not a problem, period. I say we made money. I just don't think we made bigger one. We saw, we still have that, Joe. All the figures, there's stuff that costs us. When you check, I mean, there was still lighting out there. And all the stuff, you know, overtime, we couldn't track, a lot of overtime. I mean, we already put most of it. And I don't mind having outings, but I don't want to go up the course for a week, just to say we had it. Until it's, now, I'm tired of that, I'm tired of the people thinking that we made money.
Well, I would disagree about posting it for a week if we could get an L D G A.
Well, yeah, yeah, what, what, I just said, credit my board. But I'm not bored to do it, and make nothing.
Oh, I know, I understand. I agree with that.
There are fine shows, but you have to do things in order to make money down the road. That may not be as possible as you'd like to see it. But, you know, to be able to brag and say, I had a female that been here, and I had a lady that been here, not everybody is far enough to say that. I mean, that's worth, there is, that's worth it, something. That's all I'm saying.
I wish, I wish we could have that, but that hasn't happened. Other than us having, and who's?
Please comment.
Mark, can I press him? Just a couple of quick ones on that. I think it's pretty stark on the description. I think a lot of that is tasks. I did notice that they talked about recreational master planning, which I think is pretty important. You're also talking about utilities master planning, which I also believe is necessary. Great talk about building and the community and expanding the community to bring people down here and residents, and we're building a lot more homes than we have for five years, for sure. One of the things I did see, not as a task or anything up there, was to talk a little bit about the infrastructure. I realize 59 homes, something like that, doesn't make sense. But it could potentially, the same thing holds true with Unit 12. All of a sudden, you sell Unit 12 to a developer, how are we going to handle a lot of the aging infrastructure that we have? So I think that should be something, at least listed in there to take a look at as a task. Thank you.
Any other comment on that?
I just, I just, so you'll get back to us with the revised...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did you want to mention briefly on G before we move on?
Yes, on G, we provided you a draft request for maintenance about harsh reform for the Scrutage Conservation Area. But what I realized is I failed to put in the paperwork about policy. These forms relate to two policies within the policy manual. Section E 1008 is one of the policies in relation to altering what alteration of the district property, the flooding of golf courses. The other policy is related to Scrutage Habitat. And I only provided you the paperwork in the board package for the Scrutage Habitat. So I would like to table this discussion and bring back both the old resolution that relates to policy E-1008, and then also the Scrutage Habitat. So my apologies on that, but I realized that yesterday, that the paperwork, not all paperwork, was in the board package. So I'd like to bring that back to the next thing.
Okay. I do, a question on that. If we were, originally, you and I talked, we were going to talk about eliminating the Scrutage possibly. Have your conversation through that, moving in or eliminating it?
You and I did have a conversation, that would be...
But I want to bring up to the board, my thought tonight, Scott, is we still have the tournament restrooms on the agenda for like three or four years down the road. Maybe if we address the Scrutage now, we can put the restrooms where we originally wanted, and make everybody happy. Just a thought.
I didn't know there was too many people unhappy.
Well, I think what we did...
Yeah.
It makes no sense.
I think it was the cost.
It was the cost. I had nothing to do with it.
No, we could have put it where we originally wanted.
I don't know what it was.
We could have put it where we originally wanted. Is that not correct?
I don't know, because I didn't care where it was. I wanted it up.
Yeah, I can't. Well, sorry to remember.
Okay. I'm not sure how much flexibility we have on that, have that one, certainly discuss when we get to it. Okay, now we get to the discussion of the recreation survey, like that's a golf survey and the action plan. We had a brief discussion on the plans a few months ago, and at the last meeting, we discussed having a deeper discussion at this meeting. So, I don't know, staff wants to give us some background, or... In particular, Ray, you're the one who wanted to bring this up. So is there any particular things you wanted to talk about, about this process? Or are you less concerned about what you asked for right now, because you're more concerned about the R S P?
We talked about the recreational draft?
Yeah. The results of the survey, that we got back, resulted in how we're going to respond to that survey from both the golf and the recreation side.
I'm sorry, the recreational draft, there's two changes, like as you made, you want to talk about that first?
Sure.
Well, there's no mention at all, when you say the, when you list the facilities, and you want select, have people select them, or select a top lot, there's no mention at all of the fitness center. And yet, if I read all your survey results, everybody says, well, not everybody. There was mention that people want a bigger facility, a bigger facility on the flats, and there was mention of it, but we didn't list it.
Number one, okay.
Well, I would just add it on, and I don't know if we want to mention anything about the fitness center here. I mean, they're all part of the deal.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're talking about. I'm looking at...
I'm looking at, it says, please, number three, please select these of the recreational facilities you may be interested in adding, expanding, or enhancing. And there's no mention of the fitness center.
Those are based on the meetings that we had individually with each supervisor, and what came out of those meetings, and what the...
I'm sorry, those are based on what?
The meetings that we all individually had, what passed in meetings, what each supervisor, when we all met, and whatever, what it is that everyone wanted to see, what the priorities were for each.
All right, I'm asking you one. I think we ought to include the fitness center. It was in your survey, I mean, the survey came back, that was a lot of response, or was it not, despite...
Yes, but with the master plan, the number three is based on the conversation that each of the class supervisors individually had with first.
Why put it that way?
Mike?
We can... We can certainly add anything to the survey, supervisor. I mean... We can certainly add anything, absolutely, whatever, whatever you think.
Well, we personally, I'd like to, to do away with the fitness center, assuming that the hospital gets theirs up. I don't want to spend any more money in the fitness center here. I want the hospital to build on your own money, that can then our people go there.
I'd like them to hear it, because people, not the board.
Uh, I think you said there's 79 people that are paying for... My understanding, there's 79 people, I think it is paid for the membership to the fitness center. You had, somebody told me that around that number.
Yes, that is over about 30.
Is there any way of finding out how many of them are over 65?
Not at this moment, no, we're working on a new, looking for a payment update on the recreation software. We will go for, but based on what we have on the board, we have no record in the computer for birthdays. Now, what we may be able to do is go back and look on the waivers. It would be, it would be...
The main reason I bring that up is because if the new facility is put in place at the hospital, silver swimmers is available for the 65 and older. That's the reason I asked, how does he say that?
It's part of the insurance plan.
Right, okay.
I think that that's statistics together. Do you want us to pull that together, how many are over 65? I mean, that's...
Yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe later.
Wouldn't it be just to be, determine how many of the 79 members are through the service?
That we could definitely do, so that kind of fluctuate, that does fluctuate a little bit, only because of the silver sheeters. And this is able to completely lose silver sheeters, obviously, you just offer it for a facility. If a member has silver sheeters, and they are absent from using the facility within a certain period, it might withdraw. So that, that's over, again, not by us, but that number would fluctuate a little bit, just based on the...
We would ask, question, how many people do you have in the fall that would be eligible for the service?
Sure.
I feel, oh. Just trying to get that, I'm not sure.
I think really, on, I'd like to hear what people have to say, that's all, very simple. And the same thing in the community side, what people think of this place. I got no, I mean, you know I don't, you say that you can't, you can't do any more classes because they're booked and they have to be defined for people who just want to work out and do fitness. I mean, that's a few words. So I think the interesting, not, not everybody wants to pay 30 bucks or 35 bucks or something at the hospital for three or four years.
Right, so just so that I can put this back through, what you're asking is the question, would recreational facilities, that they would be interested in adding or expanding? Would you like me to add fitness centers?
I had a community set, what were you going to, I had the other question you're going to have to come up with. If indeed, under this new recreational plan, we're not doing anything with this building, what are we going to do? Eventually. Because eventually, I assume, if we do, like Mike said, take advantage of the hospital and their facility, what are we going to do there? So that is the option for recreational, other than...
Okay, any other comments on...
Oh, I don't know, what, there's no mention, there's no mention, what's left to talk about, of course. Anywhere that I can say.
I think that's only because during the prospecting plan, this is going to go out, the shovel board is not completed. So the first question is asking...
Oh, that's not, that's not a good answer, because you got a lot of board.
Yeah, that's, and would you be interested in adding that facility?
I would like to, I like to hear what people have to say about the shovel, I know a builder.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to... Any other comment on the action plan?
Yeah. I... Mike, it says, on the restaurant, says you can reward staff members that continue to excel in their duties and service on the monthly. I don't know, what does that mean?
So something about those situations, you know, that have gift cards or exceptional shows, or you, or you just going to create that kind of a passive, you know, personal contest, or situations like that. You just have to keep the staff moving, and keep, keep them on that.
Okay, we can do it, it's for your turn.
We have done in the past, it has not been necessarily... We have done in the past, it has not been necessarily consistent, um, on a schedule, on a monthly basis. It's been based on, basically, when the situation works. If we had a team member that had a very good view over time, being, you know, rewarded that staff member, you know, from a meeting, but it wasn't scheduled on a consistent, month-to-month basis. So it's ready to be met, for me, and what...
At least there's definitely more to it.
And sometimes on a more hard, you know, we do this.
I don't know.
I was gonna wait for you, but I don't know when to. On the signature dishes. Last month, when you had the lobster, I'm pretty sure it was twenty-four ninety-five. Now we advertise it out at twenty-nine ninety-five. It seems like every single time we go to an update on the menu, we've got to increase the price. Did we lose money selling it at twenty-four ninety-five?
So the thing about seeing the requested lobster is the market price. So sometimes that market fluctuates, our cost fluctuates, so then many, many times fluctuates. At that particular time, in first order, market is very, market is very good, uh, in the last, I'm not exactly sure the exact present amount for the fluctuations. Another situation, if we do it again, the market price will be much higher.
It just, it just like...
I just thought, you go to a restaurant, you see, you go...
I think it's not the market price, I understand. It just seems like you better always market price than you over price. Right, because you turn around, I don't know whether it's right or not, but it's just a perception that keeps coming out, that every time we update something, it's got to have a price increase. And it's just something that, to me, is a miracle, but, uh...
Sure, I mean, not to be redundant, but the cost of this, in certain situations where the market price is something that, on a general basis, is possibly zero year to year, it's not going to add. It goes up, and we don't give things more to the future, so we'll then actually price increase in thirty-four years. You know, we base, we base our menu prices based on the quality of goods, um, percentage that is, is presented for more improved, which comes in the year, you know, thirty-five, thirty-six percent, and use those numbers on the cost at five and a half.
I would, I agree, I would, I would just put market price.
Definitely, I would definitely, that can be a good use of it, basically, a re-motion, but those are just people's spend, so it's also used for market price, uh, advertising, for people's spending. Every month, I'll, 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 so, you know, we have a pretty decent idea for a half, through the market price, you know, a few weeks out, and it's based on kind of where it is and what it is, and what it is. If it was a basic menu item, I was going to go on a menu for a month, and then I could see doing a, a special promotion, I think we'll just call more than we need.
Let me ask you this, on your one-on-one staff member meetings weekly, are you guys, do we have a file of these employees? Do they have like a jacket with their stuff in it? Or do we just talk to them and say, see you next year?
There, there are individual staff files, um, in this situation, I think if we add, you know, if there's disciplinary action or, or things like that, then those will be presented in a file. As far as, you know, the monthly meetings, there is a record of that, yes. Do you have any other questions?
A record of having a meeting or a record of others discussing the meeting?
Both.
Okay.
I want to say sure to do that.
Okay. Thank you. All in all, you and I talked about this once before, but it's getting there, when people from a golf league come down, have you figured out how you're gonna handle seating arrangements when we have these big golf groups? And we have people who want to have dinner?
We've definitely had that special in, in posts, golf committee meetings, and obviously, there's been some recommendations. I, I find the positives and the minuses to all those, um, as I said before, and every time we have, everything's different. We have different groups coming in, different meetings, different food services, um, just to throw a blanket over. I just, I think it would cause more confusion for, for you guys, or discussion for me. There are just way too many scenarios of how a restaurant, in certain fashions, to have one blanket after that, honestly, is reasonable.
So we're gonna keep it having a chaotic, where you'll be nice to see two couples, fifty years old, next to a bunch of girls?
I, I agree with your concern, I'm just not so sure we have a, a blanket after that. If, if the, you know, if, say, the banquet facility area is, is not being used, we will set that up for dining. And in that scenario, we will definitely try to separate all of our guests as best as possible, but it's, it's not possible on every single day. Uh, we do try to separate those as much as possible, use, you know, the resources that we have, we can plan everyone, and, and things like that. But I just don't have one blanket answer that surprises every day. You know, it's a case-by-case scenario, and we do, we do the best we can to celebrate the best we can, and if we have two hundred people in a building at a time, separation is not always possible.
I understand, I just don't, let me give you an answer to part of your question. If our golf members are going in there and acting like they're drunks, we've got two problems. One is, staff is giving too much alcohol, and two, the member's not appropriately acting in public place, and should be...
Well, I, I probably outspoken, let's say, this guy's coming in there, and he holds a golf, and they're a cop girl.
That's more appropriate.
Okay. Anyway, I still am not very, how are we gonna resolve the problem, and that's disappointing. But it was not that important, okay?
Well, I would say that the...
We want to build a restaurant business.
We, we are trying to build that restaurant business, because the core of the members is part of that restaurant business. We've got members that are acting in a way that is inappropriate for restaurant activity, the problem may be with them. They're not acting necessarily in an inappropriate manner. It's, unfortunately, sometimes it is talk that shouldn't be overheard by somebody wanting to go in there and dine. Also on top of that is that when they, we come in and we're drinking, probably get a little bit louder. I don't see, you know, there's been talk about, we'll put us golfers in the back room and leave the nice area open for dining. And to me, there's a lot of that makes sense. Now, we walk back there, and there's a banquet going on, well, obviously, we can't go back there that day. And we go back into the dining room area and do our drinking, or whatever the case is. I'm just using that as an example. So, I don't see that banquet room being used all that often to where that isn't, you know, that's the first choice, guys, go to the back. We'll service you in there. And leave your dining room open for people to come in and enjoy the evening, looking out at the lake, sitting over by the lanier. And if it's busy that day, then we don't go in there. I can see where, I don't know how we're gonna get people back in here. I know you've got these cards coming out, and it's probably saying everything's great. Those are people that go there to eat all the time. Are we getting more people in than we used to? I see the numbers are going up, as far as the number of meals being served. But are we really bringing people back in to Island View? That, you know, when fifty percent said they don't even bother going in, that's a problem. And how do we get people back in? And I think part of it is make it more enjoyable in there. Now, we've added the acoustics, don't know for sure how well that's working, it appears like it might have helped a little bit. I think that's what they're trying to say, they don't say that we're being... We're not going in and act necessarily purposely acting stupid or drunk, but things sometimes you'd said that shouldn't exist, to where, how do we even over here?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the guys care where they go. I mean, they don't, they don't need to see you, so...
Sure, they don't need to enter, it's not saying that we're not gonna start to adjust that and putting one fashion together, I'm just saying, we're not wanting to cancel it, they're coming here today. So we're definitely trying to utilize those ideas that you mentioned, and how we do the backroom as much as possible. Totally, totally expect them to try to do their options.
And there will, and there will be a group that says, we don't want them back.
That's definitely gonna happen.
Well, that's...
But that's okay, because it's gonna be one fashion to another, so, on that basis, it's all the other.
I think, I think if you tell them why you're doing it, they will be more than, I would assume that we have to do.
Some of them may argue no matter what, but we can deal with them one by one.
On, on rules recap, which we absolutely did not update at all, I would say. For him to make a statement, the rule, the rule on both courses is not a replicated term, the severely limits how we can retain these areas. That's true, but it's what you were talking about, and what part of the fairway was talking about. On what part of the net, we like to wear just about everything. So to say that we've got a problem now on the left-hand side of seventeen turtle, then naturally, we had a problem on the right-hand side of seventeen turtle. I mean, they could, I, I, I...
I can only, you know, they're like, in terms of, because as a coordinator, you're gonna say you can't do anything, because it hinders, um, what we can do on a backhand level. Doesn't, doesn't say that you can't do anything, but I probably would then see that we don't have a sort of design for that.
Well, that's just one example, the key point is that it's taken in fact, it's not an action plan. Good. Yeah.
Okay. Then we, I gather, do we want to have a conversation about the RFP now, or do we do it first?
Yeah, here we're saying, it's gonna, what, sort of, kind of, we can deal with it, we can do it.
I guess on the pool thing, or the comments in the pool, I, it's just, the way it's ordered is like, I just don't want to start up the first time. Hopefully, this has been an ongoing thing that we just reset. For example, you say, our staff will also begin to make schedule rounds on the pool deck to check what's applying to the rules, and all the rules get set in fact. Have we not been doing that?
They do make rounds, one, saying we will increase the number of rounds if they do, but, um, since we've always been talking about table open, we'll go, if the people are, I don't think, or on their chairs, it's not... We need to kind of hold round and make sure everything's good.
How often do we do those other, those pool points above, uh, you know, deep sanitation, the chairs, tables, that? Like, how often is that done over the course of the year?
So, my crew sprays me on the chair daily, every morning, we'll do the whole event.
Oh, daily, okay. They spray the water pool then? Do they do that daily?
Not daily, uh, we, we do it daily for a little while, now we're down to about once a week, week, we spray it down with the entire...
I get it, of course.
Uh, one, one, once a week, we spray everything down, so the power washing. And that's a lot more than, uh, lipstick.
Is there a schedule policy or something?
Uh, George has it in his office, it is.
George has, um, our guy that works here, uh, there, so, and I'm not sure what they, I think it's, uh, yeah, he directs it, so I'm not sure.
Okay, I'm still confused on the tennis courts and the pickleball courts. If I, if I don't want to the pickleball group, and I want to play on the court, I can schedule time.
We, so the play on the pickleball courts is not something that we facilitate. We group it, they're, the ball players that are there have came in amongst themselves to say, we typically, like, we show up and play every, whatever it is, we'll just say Monday through Friday at eight AM. Um, that's not something that's sun-related, or means. So what we do is we ask, um, some of the pickleball folks to give us a list of what those times aren't gonna play, and we have that available in the recreation pop-up.
Is there not a post that forces not available certain times, if somebody wants to go up there and play, they know they can't?
Well, we don't do reservations for courts.
No, membership?
We're trying to do reservations, if you're saying, we're trying to control it. If you group yourselves up and people on the pickleball courts, can they say, this is our time?
Well, they're not always, I mean, they're not all painted up or for the times, even certainly the same, on Monday through Friday, group ABC comes in and plays at nine AM on court one.
Yeah, and I mean, each, a couple of them want to just go out and play it, see what they like, if they go to a court, and then they turn off for...
I mean, yeah, it, it gotta be something, so we'll just add on to the, to the schedule, just, you know, obviously, we would have to ask them which court seems fit to play on. If on a random Thursday, they decide that they want to play on court three instead of court one, and that kind of part of that might be someone permanently there to facilitate, and they're leaving to be on court one, go ahead with that. But we don't get, typically, I would say, typically, we don't really get a lot of complaints about folks coming in and saying, I want to play on court three, and somebody's going to court three.
And then the other, they don't have the way, they're talking, but you can't play it on the court.
No, no, that's correct.
And then you're gonna have to figure out how you're gonna handle it, so, or, or...
I mean, I, I kind of expected that to play the same, it's kind of a first time for reserve type of a deal, but, yeah.
That never usually worked for me, I always take it for a fact.
And, and once that facility is done, there's a group that typically comes in, kind of same name as the ball, if they're a group that, that you want to visit and face this, and says, um, yeah, we show up and play every Monday through Wednesday at nine AM. Same thing, we'd be happy to, to add that, or put that on some sort of schedule, if you will, so that people know, um, I know that pickleball has absolutely do that, because if someone was interested in coming and playing, someone knew, they wanted them to know what times they could show up and have somebody to play against.
Then just one last thing, I, I've been afraid to answer this question for about six months on shovel boy. Should we revise that the people are doing it anyway, or they gotta go out and buy it?
I thought that was important. Well, I did too bad what I asked, I got a good answer.
Yeah, I would say marketing all the questions.
Residents don't have to go out and buy it on shovel boy, though.
So we should buy it too, our question will be open, I should, in next month, if they...
Yeah, we can start going with the go-in person, either, we, we probably have to have some sort of a small shed facility or something to store, although it's not just kind of sitting out there, but we will look at that.
I agree, that would be part of the, the plan, I think, that's what we do.
Part of it, no, that's just something...
We're gonna put out a shift.
There's like a small, not, not, I mean, what if that's somewhere out there? Oh, okay, my, my, same here, okay.
You're welcome. We got a great authority.
It's all set.
Yeah, yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. I'm not even bored. Can you follow that?
Linda Camp, and I, and we're in the resident.
Good morning, Paula.
You are.
Um, my question for him is of the restaurant. I know I complained last month at the meeting, however, since then, we've had problems again. We had a problem, uh, the Sunday following our meeting, we went in to get the deal, on the Sunday deal, where you get two pitches of beer, and you get, um, this great deal. So my husband and I walked in, we were all ready to sit down and enjoy a meal, and they had run out of drinks. So that was that first experience. So we waited a couple of weeks, we went back, we went in, we sat down, we had a server come over to us and say, what are you going to order? And we said, we're gonna do wings, we're gonna do beer, and we mudlighted. So we waited, and we waited, and we waited over twenty minutes, and finally, my girl, that was... And finally, my girl dialed up and said, "Hey, where's our drink, where's our beer?" And the order had never been put in. So at that point, Richard said, "I'm really sorry, but, um, the server is up a lot at night, because he hasn't paid me, and it's really hard, you know, knowing you should be like this, however, you know, he really didn't mean it, but I'm sorry, I'll put your order in and I'll get your beer for you." And then our server came out with wings and said, "Oh, I'm really sorry. I thought somebody else had placed your order, because I saw Richard walking around with a beer." So that was my second one. So therefore, if other people are running into this experience, you know, don't want to back them. My other question to Mike is Ron. I don't know what Ron's job is, his responsibility to interact with. I never seen him on a table, particularly. I never asked, he never ever has asked anyone if they have an enjoyable experience. He just sits, or he's ratin' I think through the deal, and other people that work there. He doesn't do his job, and I would like to know what his responsibility is to hire.
Um, yeah, you're right, I mean, I just part of the accountability responsibility is listed in our action plan, and is, um, something that is very urgent, um, on my list of things to accomplish. Um, and I'm aware of both of those situations that you referred to. Um, we have hopefully addressed them accordingly. Um, and it is definitely high on my list to make sure that, um, Ron is accomplishing the goal that you've set out for him. Um, and obviously, that's been a very part of my agenda moving forward these next few weeks, a few months.
It just seems that nobody takes accountability for the service people that are there, and their service is spot. It's not worth it, it's spot. You cannot go in there and get a bill like, a meal like. And I still think the reason that a lot of people are not going into the restaurant is because of the pricing. That's just my opinion. I know you have a menu, menu coming out in October, I still think it's too expensive. Thank you.
Mike, I have some other follow-up questions I have on that. When we have a service issue, do we make any type of amend? Um, if, if I'm waiting twenty minutes and I haven't got my beer or my wings that I ordered, I would kind of expect management would say, who are really tired and rescrewed up, will bring it out to you, no charge.
Wow, you guys, you're down here. We're hot, we're...
The answer is, yes, yes, we do, we do, depending on the severity of, of service issues. Um, we, we make you complimentary meals, you know, free dessert, or, you know, maybe a percentage off of, of their food item, um, depending on severity of the issue, so yes, we do.
My follow-up, good question. Mike, were you aware of the service issues that Mrs. Camp was speaking of? You were made aware about Mrs. Camp, right?
I was, yes.
Who, who made, well, how, how did I communicate it to you?
I'm sorry, I was within, um, did I, was, she wasn't aware of it, he did it over the paper.
Okay, so as long as the communication was getting to Mike that he understands, I mean, I don't want, you know, this to be the first time that you near any service issues, but if you were aware, that was, that was my question, thank you.
And sometimes it might happen, though, if you're making the assumption, "Well, here the first time, it's busy someday," like. Anyway, I'll only suggest that I didn't understand, come, have a car, or they're running at the, isn't that cars at the place for all the common?
Oh, right here.
Yeah.
This is the, what city we're in right here?
Right.
If any of the supervisors are looking at these, um, the, here.
So again, I have usually the opposite effect, I have a lot of visiting here, and I have the opposite. So I, I haven't had any long ways in the country so far. But I was gonna mention, in some larger cities, the way that they're out, I'm telling people, with the hour of their service, some places, when it's flipped into the work hours, so. We're going to a normal transition, we're trying to be, I'm thinking a little more understanding of the, and so. Yeah, they do, they're laying out a route there.
I'd walk out.
They have that crazy thing that we find, they're very...
Wouldn't you see it there, again?
Yeah, there's some people really like where they are, so I think it's relative, it's relative. Um, it depends on how much you like it, but, but the, uh, only two comments I have, this, uh, the lady that was here earlier and had a lead, she lives at thirty-six, twenty-seven Sunrise. She wanted to bring up her water, it was in the river that pollution day. Um, even when she turned it on, she said she couldn't smell it, so she wanted to make some...
Her water in her house?
Her water out of her tap.
Did she tell anybody?
She just told me that, I don't, I don't know what I'm gonna do.
Where is she, what's the address?
Thirty-six, twenty-seven Sunrise. And this is the widow, she's the new widow, and she just really never get anything, so.
Perfect.
Spirits of neighbors helping her in this particular time. She's never been there for how total, how many steps up?
For three hours in a week.
I'm sorry.
This is part of, this is part of the time I'm on, discussing, I'm not on.
I'm sorry, yeah.
All right.
But this, what is that number on?
Run pitch.
Run, no, pardon.
Mark, I hadn't intended to bring this up, but I have to, since I heard a couple comments. And I'm not, everybody's heard enough about what the services of the restaurant concerns with the restaurant. But I have to say, the follow-up is terrible. I haven't, I sent out an email the other day about a question on some discussions. It says, "Good afternoon, Mr. Camp. I will forward your inquiries to the Island View Restaurant staff. Thank you, and have a great day." Kelly, that was a little over week ago, I haven't heard a word.
Mr. Camp, will follow up on that, or even if they...
If.
Well, yeah, we need to, we need, th- those are things that I'm not aware, but I mean, you can follow up on that.
I listen. I feel badly to have to bring up things like this, probably, that we simply are saying these types...
I know, please communicate those things to me through iron, and I can, I wanna make sure that we, you do this every time.
But I did communicate it, I got a response that, response was, "The staff at Island View Restaurant has been notified, and they will contact me." All I'm saying is they never contacted me, so that's all I'm saying.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I think the action plan, you know, the ongoing thing, that will continue to review. And is there any other comment on, uh, is I up to, or are we ready to move on? Are we ready to move on? Number six, Anna, none? Positions and communications?
None.
Staff, we go.
All right, uh, figures, just after I've already seen some of all horse, um, updates. Uh, the work on hole fourteen, uh, turtle, um, um, across the bridge, we have completed the sound and plants. Uh, I think we will soon work, um, on hole sixteen, uh, around the main, the subsequent washouts, um, similar, similar to that. Tree work will resume next week, uh, so there's three trees around, just the flowers, and pine trees on the right range. Uh, staff will also need, uh, big pine and some, uh, cover. Um, heading to my, uh, weekly updates, over horses, uh, I'm seeing a wall of location, and nothing in four hundred. They'll all continue to promote the growth and coverage of primary, mainly thin areas, primarily back in October. Uh, heading into the last closure, uh, the season which is coming during September, uh, fairly intimated, uh, we'll be adjusting in comparison to the over seeds, and all that is kind of reshaping in the spare ways, uh, to be modified, uh, to coincide with how we manage it. Any other project or touches, we can, the two guys in Carpass, uh, will be done during that closing as well. Uh, all the limbs and high five areas, uh, will be verified in a little time. Uh, power has been installed, we're going to set out, we're in the front house drive. Um, so we can use more light on those trees, uh, on the sign, uh, kind of hopefully get past hurricane season, and we'll also be able to remove those boxes on the road trees. Um, staff name is Frank, and we have hired two employees this month, uh, and we did have one, uh, leave to, um, district team.
So, Mike, before you do the closures, uh, I sent an email the other day about holding down on Labor Day. Have you made any decisions on that?
Uh, sure, um, okay, I guess we're gonna have one question in the world on that.
That weekend, true Monday?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, just, just a note on that, so, as I responded before, uh, in the past, we have not seen the demand for that. However, I do feel that the issue demands is, is higher, so I, I feel, at least for this year, I think it's a good idea to go ahead and do that. I, I don't really see, I mean, obviously, there's one, some of our man's procedures, I do, not a much of an effect of purely playing the course, or, or lobby issues, that's why, at least for this year, uh, I feel we, we, I feel we need to pass a special extent now to help promote some extra players, or, uh...
I feel the last two years, we've had a outing too, on Labor Day, and had this.
I thought we did, too. I come to find it's...
I don't know, we just got...
I thought it was, right?
Couple of, yeah.
I think we did, yeah.
Yeah, we did the last year.
Yeah. Yes, yeah, yeah. I don't know, they don't want to do this, because they're...
Um...
Why?
Yeah, you don't want to hear the answer, probably, so.
Never mind, it's probably, I'm with it.
If you're mad, I don't...
I'm sure it had something to do with COVID.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to imagine, uh, I'm trying to...
It was, it was in the eight, six, two.
I don't know, we don't, we, we, well, they, they, they...
Oh, really, right?
Yeah.
You mean, you're a, you're a...
Uh, um, I'm a member of the, so we've approved those five new rates. Um, we obviously anticipated that approval, uh, we have our, uh, renewal cards, uh, ready to go. Uh, so we can actually do those, uh, Monday. So you will see the email, uh, with a link for the review, um, and also the hard copy, uh, hard copy, uh, information. We also, there was a month of email, uh, mail to go with the monthly status. And we also have some more information about that, and a monthly email, which is, uh, like...
There's a question, should we not put a letter for our Canadian friends? I mean, they've had a unusual situation up there, as far as I know, the border is closed till, till, the border's closed till, for like, thirty years, September.
September twenty-first.
They don't start, they did again.
September twenty-first, that's when it's closed, September twenty-one.
Okay, it's closed until September twenty-first. There, I mean, to ask them, to get them, maybe get back for a twenty-year-old, or ever by October one, I think is not really very fair.
No, I don't, I think the law is, is have to determine, they have to have it done by then, maybe they can, we all need to be set out typically in early September for those who are ready to, it's not required for them to, uh, and they can do...
Well, I tell you, I really want applications, since I have to move by a few of them first.
That is, if you are applying for a full year of membership, if you want, up to you, if you want a membership, just pop up on the phone, and you pay on the phone.
But I'm not sure that the Hades, what happens if they, you know, if they come down November first and want to leave, I don't know.
And they can make that decision on that one time. We're just getting the information, too, man.
Okay, so we don't want to say, we understand your situation, we will be working here? Or anything like that?
Yeah.
No?
I mean, it's still more than a technical fashion, kind of, you know.
Well, it's, it's kind of unusual, you know.
Okay, sure.
Okay.
On the rest of that side, so we've been in progress, we've all sided.
Last Saturday, played in the shotgun, and I don't know how many groups were set out prior to the shotgun start. Why, if you're having a shotgun, do we allow tee times to go out in front? Because by the third hole, we had three groups waiting on the, waiting on the hole. There was two outside groups, and from what I understood, there was some hanging with group that got them a lot. If we're having a shotgun, why, to me, you play in the shotgun, and you don't play.
Um, the league, you're referring to, you're going to set up as a reverse shotgun?
No.
What time does the shotgun start?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, so typically, this time here, we don't have full-blown shotguns, um...
Then why would they put it in the, out, that's what I'm, in the, in the shotgun?
A lot of times, a lot of times, uh, to, to best utilize our tee sheet, uh, this time here, we don't have enough players to go utilize. If you want to do a full-blown shotgun in the morning, it would really be a full shotgun also in the afternoon. So it's not just a one hole, it's not just a one and one, so to, to best utilize the tee sheet.
It was...
This is the time of year, typically, we would run, you know, some full-blown tee times, a reverse shotgun at eight, and then we would follow that up, and then the reverse shotgun, third and first hole, we'd follow that up with tee times for the rest of the day. That's typically our most efficient way to run a tee sheet, because it's kind of easier.
We had two shotguns, we had one twelve, the lizard group went out at eight o'clock, and the polar group went out sometime around twelve. But yet, in the morning, the tango wood group went out prior to eight o'clock, some tango wood people. And two outside groups were in front of us. I know that shotgun probably was not full, why do they have to play in the shotgun? If you're having shotgun, to me, they ought to be in shotgun.
I, I really think that's why, for, for, um, the second, the second, which would be on, like, you know, computer, like, showing you on a tee sheet, now, so, uh, I don't know, I can paint that picture, but...
Okay.
So, no, I'm more than I can understand, and if, and if at that time, you feel that you need to address the way you set up a tee sheet, you can do so, but, but if that's what I'm saying, we, this is what we're looking for.
It just seem, if you're having shotgun in the morning and the afternoon, why couldn't it gone in that eight o'clock? I don't know.
Sure, if in that situation, you, you know, if that day, in reverse shotgun in the morning, and the shotgun in the afternoon, it was likely, or some other model clock shotgun, or, they may not even have been on the same course. So I, I just think we should, uh, go, and feel that time, and do something better, and have a, so...
Okay.
I'm just, just in my, I was buying, I was, whatever it was, just for whatever reason, it didn't work. Because the whole ball force was filled up, yeah, it was over fifteen minutes, it just didn't work, whatever you were doing. So hopefully, you meet with me, just so you know it didn't work.
Sure, I mean, that's what I'm saying, a lot of, you know, we, we do that often, and the format necessarily may or may not play the part. I have to, but it's the people that are playing, that are as well, and back, of course, uh, so we can evaluate, if it was going on all the other, moving forward, obviously, some of the other situations, we also have, we do, uh... All right, on the, on the rest of that, but, uh, we've been actively, uh, working on the cards, uh, Kenny has a large staff there. Um, I also have a staff, uh, half a size that adds to that. Um, those, um... cards are overwhelmingly positive and the cards can provide a few choices, quality food and service and prison. Anytime you'd like to read our cards, if you want to. And we're also hanging out party with our bills to solicit more reviews on TripAdvisor. In the last two weeks, we've shared, we have seen several full and five star reviews. This has made us move up in our rankings by three spots over the last two weeks. The goal that I told you guys in reading reviews is to be in the top 10 by the end of the year. Also on Facebook, our Facebook posts are generating a lot of positive responses in regards to, um, mostly our reading posts are, you know, the signature issues. And that's, anybody can access that on Facebook and you can see those discussions on there. The organic response on Facebook has dramatically increased as long as page likes and page followers. So we're seeing a lot of positive stuff start happening through the restaurant. Obviously, it's not going to go zero to sixty every night, but I see on all these, you know, different habits that we're taking, it was starting to gain some traction and getting some positive response and hopefully they'll address some of your concerns as far as more people coming in the door. The short term, things have been moving up slightly. It's, you know, it's, hopefully continues in that fashion and that's time to go. On the golf side, so this is the time here where we're currently setting up our tee sheets. This includes adding shotgun, reverse shotguns, regular tee times, and all the other formats that we do. Following the setup of the tee sheets, we'll be adding our member group bars, member product and other associated tee sheet. This is also a time here where Andy is working on merchandising for a break through the year. He typically needs with vendors to do set up pre orders for throughout the season. Just want to say that he's done a tremendous job throughout the years in running our merchandising business. Sun Lake dominates the market in our area in hardware sales. We sell more hardware, clothes, balls and all that than probably all of the other pro shotguns combined. I can't say that for sure, but just in my experience, if you go to all pro shotguns out here, they don't have the equipment like we have. And another reason why we do that is because we're moving. There's been retail stores in this area that have all failed. So I just, I just want to acknowledge what we do and how our merchandising is actually really, really good. You know, that just comes from, from the dedicated service and all the general days that we do and the customer service that we offer for both the clothes. If we sell clothes in the correct, we send them back and we have a fix and all that. So we have some loyalty there that comes to our customers. And that's what I have for the F A today.
On the restaurant, I still think, I think that you've made good strides for maybe that's coming out in October. I think it's stepping the right direction. But I'm, I'm very much concerned that you're not going to be able to communicate it to anybody. And I know, I, I would just throw out to you, and I said this before, sometimes it's better to lose a little money upfront, you'll rejoice and gain the money down the road. Why don't we walk the way Southern Lake District residents a week? Come in, buy an entree, get one and a half price. I mean, do something to get these people to come in and try your wonderful menu.
Sure. We, prior to the COVID event, we've done those, we've had resident nights where they receive 45% off an entree. We've done that several times in a year. We've done with.
But all that advertising is gone just for the membership for the most part.
No, that's been spread to residents. We've done for both, we've done it for residents and for others. So we will start to continue those to do that.
You got any plans?
There is no list at this moment to the.
We got new venue coming, I'm just, I'm trying to help. You got new venue coming out in October. Why don't you have a defense October for everybody who doesn't settle up?
We would love to do that. As far as the, our current COVID situation, we may have limitations. So we would definitely love to.
You want to wait for the COVID situation to resolve? You're going to be four months into the hole. You gotta try something. You can't let, you just try. What do you got to do?
No, I'm not disagreeing. You have to agree and we will do that.
Have you had any nights that you were close to maximum capacity?
When we did the large event for 4th of July, we were, we were getting up there. But we've had a couple of nights where we had some events soon, the bank over there and plus golfers who's not happy that we've got up there. Without anything going on, there was no event during the event and there was no. But in a situation in the, the residence, I mean, I'm not saying not to, I'm just saying, you know, it's going to happen. We will do those. We've done nights where we invited other communities over here. We've invited Crystal Lake, the Blunts, and several of those style communities. We've done the same advertising. Basically, we just used advertising across, across, and they were able to do that.
If you wait for it to come to you, you got a long way.
Sure. Some of those events we've had in the past, we're then 150 plus. And actually, in some cases, we actually had an extended control. We had, we had an extended, we had a day because we were over the passing where you could have a hundred percent advertising. So again, I'm not disagreeing. I'm agreeing. You know, the timing needs to be correct and there are limitations. Because if your business is being the way it is, there ain't very much. You can't make it any worse.
And just requiring reservations on these specials, and that way we can know when you're in the past, you may have to turn somebody in the box anyway.
And I was very happy to advise one more. Again, I'm agreeing. You guys, those, those that, those that will happen.
I got one last thing on this thing that you sent out. Did we get this yesterday? Suddenly, Ralph Fug, rules and regulations. You sent that out yesterday. I just, it says we're going to discuss it in the next meeting, right? No, maybe?
No.
Well, this document was drawn by the board. I don't know if we can either write the change things without the board knowing about it.
It's just, I don't know. It's just that there has to be a couple of community.
That's right. Because I can't, we need to go look this up and see what changes you made. I had to go through what is totally in the system, compare the two. This just shows you the changes, not the original information.
We, we.
I don't care if it's drafted. I'm just telling you, it's not.
I had a written draft and it was just script proposals to him. Exactly what he wanted to know. I had to prepare. It's just a script.
Can you get with me outdoors? I want to see what you have.
I'm sorry?
Can you get with me outdoors at the meeting? Show me what you have.
What you guys sent out?
See, I'm sorry. You can't see what it's written on?
I, I have what the district sent out. It says updated August 44th, early, south of the rules and regulations.
See, that is, but that, I'm sorry. I was intending for the board to leave this agreement, make other changes. It doesn't not mean saying this is what it's going to be. This is, this is me telling you, I think this needs to be updated in the near term.
I understand that, but you're not, you don't show what it was.
I had, I had.
Now, we showed by days across the line, I said, yes, that's what I'm saying. I've done it. I'm just saying, it's no good.
I'm sorry. Let us know in the email. I apologize. Let us know in the email with that information. I'm sorry.
Yeah, because otherwise you have to create a new document.
Okay, yeah, I don't know.
And I would also caution you to know that you can't change some of the penalties that were proposed upon by the board.
Again, that was intended for the board to make a decision. The board was keeping the time decision on that.
And then there was the next quarter. There was the next quarter that we spent, well, two months, three months trying to get this thing together.
There's definitely some things that changed earlier, the course of time, and I just think we need to update that. And it was pretty thorough decision.
That's fine. Give it to us in the format.
We have, we have, I'm sorry. We have. I apologize. I didn't receive that.
Okay.
Can you push that back for us?
I just really quickly wanted to make mention with the recreation master plan. Primarily the timeline, the updated timeline, as they scheduled to go out on Monday. Obviously, we've got a couple of changes to make. Once that goes out, it will be out for about a month. We're going to begin that as a form of survey monkey, so that we can compile all of that data online. Makes it easy to read, easy to share, as we need to. The reason we did it for that period of time is so that we can also make mention of it in the newsletter to help encourage folks to visit this link, go take this, and kind of explain to them what this survey is for, what its purpose is, give the actual recreation office some time to let folks know they may, especially some of their identity, that this survey out. We have a tablet there that we can kind of handle that. We'll kind of do that as they come in as well. So I just wanted to thank everyone where that is scheduled with obviously these two changes to go out on Monday. Once the survey is completed and closed, the next step then is to, S and E, we'll be compiling that, putting it into a corporate format to present out of our fourth shop pages here in time.
Is there any way we can make it possible for people who are not technology savvy to do a paper survey, or can you do it?
Sure. Andy, honestly, the best thing we could do then would probably be to, like the survey monkey, let them pick one up. It would be likely end up being someone who had to attach data in for them then, because it would still be compiled via survey monkey. But that's something we'd be happy to help them with if they want to do.
Hopefully we can staff do that. Just paper form.
We, we can also, with that tablet being there, if someone just needs assistance, then we're comfortable doing it online. We'd be happy to have a staff that will want them through and all of that way.
Some people are just not.
I, I understand. So, yeah, we'll have a couple of options. So people can do that as well.
Speaking of the newsletter, are we, when are we going to make some changes to it? I get very impressed when I open up my newsletter from my bill order bill and my newsletter from August and September, and I received the bill on August 25th.
Mr. Brooks, I'll talk to you later about that. So we will get into it.
Sure.
Yes, sir. I mean, I understand what the concerns are with the date. So I'll talk to her on that. So.
I'd be a good judge. You can really, you all don't make these things to report. I think I ought to.
Listen, control the clock.
Huh?
It gives us a vindication, maybe, slot. You know, the staff report?
Okay, good evening. For August 10th, Mr. McCorris' firm has issued a day notice of terminating the prerogative for determination of the foreclosure litigation. A parallel that, assuming that criminal work is found under employment. So the, there were a couple of foreclosures that were finalized on Tuesday based on the list of files from that parallel. I think there are still five outstanding foreclosures, four of which, all of which are under active payment plan agreements and one of which is even technically filed in court file. So we have four open court files that are under payment plan. If they complete their payment plan, those will be closed. And we have another, or potential foreclosure that's under payment plan that if they, if they continue to fix it, payment plan will never become an active court file. I have all those files now and I'll be needing to hang them until they're, until they reach completion. We still have the capital matter, but that's being held. That's certainly appealed. That's being held by attorneys from the company. Mr. McCorris' firm has a vast number of old foreclosure files. Chrissy's going to go, I'm going to go over Monday to review it, to see if any of it is worth bringing brought up here, in my opinion, because it costs to public or to be represented. We have maintained those of all those court files already maintained by the court. Chrissy's going to go over and take a look and see if we made a determination that some of them need to be kept or one of those have to be restored or the existing files that were taken. Tanya and I, along with President Telling, have a meeting on Monday with Mr. Hanley to discuss the building issue that we had. I received a amended version of the ordinance from the interim county attorney. The changes that were suggested were not material with the one we're, basically what we're trying to do is just some basic language on things that are now required in ordinances. But we're going to have a talk with Mr. Hanley to make sure that once we get it on the DOC C agenda, which I believe is just happening for the first meeting in September, that hopefully we're not going to have any issues when they are, they're directed from the interim county attorney. Additionally, Lamar and I have been having a discussion with the company that is the trustee for the phase five bonds for the market plan. U S Bank is the one that does kind of the trustees. They are trying, the bondholders are trying to work out a plan to figure out a way so that they can basically get rid of the, basically get rid of what they acquired. To make the, a lot of those properties have been steered to the county. That's why the county has the due inventory. So they're trying to figure out a way to prevent any further steep, disheaths if they can maintain some value on the bonds that are outstanding. So we will be bringing something back likely at the first meeting in September for the board to consider, because there are going to be a lot more people on their plan back, to go after people that have, you know, have not been paying the bond assessments. We think there's value there and to basically try and figure out a way to make people stop walking away from the farm. So that'll be coming up the next, uh, that's it. So I've got my schedule.
Couple of projects with updates for you. The shovel board boards, if you haven't been over there yet, I've taken a look at it. It looks really good over there. We're expecting some additional installations here in the next couple of weeks, lights, benches. We should see it opening more on schedule. So we should see it opening before she blocks over or so for that facility. Drainage is about 80% complete. So we've seen nextations going out here, working there, or working through those projects on time. The paving here in the district is 100% complete. Just some other additions. We have some new banners and some new wind screens for the Rocker Club. Those will be installed here in the next or a couple of weeks. Once everything is put back together and get those back up. But we did finish off the wind screens for the entire facility because there was a section of the fence that did not have any. So we've done that. There's been some new shelving and some still, you know, improvements there around the bar area of the clubhouse. So my staff has been working on that. And we have electrified the smell in the clubhouse as well. Our preventative maintenance software that we purchased is now up and running. We have all the inventory in the system, all equipment, all vehicles, junkyard equipment and everything. So that's, that's a great accomplishment for our staff. So we can move forward with that software. Just to mention, yesterday, we received an email from Ryan Rhodes. If you haven't checked the email yet, please, please do so today. I commend that this is a follow up to the, to the meetings with Mr. Rhodes and Mr. Johnson. And last thing, for the D R one master plan, we would like to meet with supervisors whenever you do get a chance. Like, you know, we'd like to set up that. That's it.
You don't have that. On these, the sign updates, you sent that email on that, on the street signs?
Yes, yes, I did.
Yeah. And I, I think I could call, I left a message. I don't know if you guys got it. Those, those signs like on Southern Lake, maybe you can.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You don't have that. On these, the sign updates, you sent that email on that, on the street signs?
Yes, yes, I did.
Yeah. And I, I think I could call, I left a message. I don't know if you guys got it. Those, those signs like on Southern Lake, maybe you can.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Someone's going to make a sign, you'll power watching it?
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to say to my little mom that I'm glad that she's telling me that Frank has done the best job in the restaurant. And the other thing is, I mentioned a month ago at the last meeting about maybe introducing breakfast on Saturday and Sunday, and I'd like to know where you're at with that.
Sure. First thanks to the, I had a call on Tuesday, obviously the, that was a great, so thank you for that. I have been in discussion with the, the morning breakfast. Obviously, our last attempt at brunch was not successful, so we are obviously not going to go back to that. And we are working out a staffing scenario, which is our biggest, our biggest, you know, um, but we are looking to that scenario and, and we're looking forward to hoping that we can, um, still get a lot of that, so, um, hoping, um...
I got, just on the food conversation, I saw your numbers on the ice cream place. They're going down quick, you got, you got them up or something before they're done?
Yeah, as I said, I really, we have, looking to drive, we have insufficient, so we're looking to gain on the levels and people don't see that it's there.
Could we have made a mistake by having it out there as opposed to the side of our store?
Um, I'm not sure if I can answer that. So obviously, we're starting, I want to have some more, some events out there. I had some plans for some smaller events and smaller events, you know, hundreds of those. And also, the only, the sale weren't limited to ice cream out there. So we're hopefully starting this week or next, I want to start to have more ice cream sale out there. I've had a, we've had a change on point sales system in order to identify the, you know, work and totality of things, so, um, out there. So that will be a better picture for being pushing up. Can I answer the guests? This says I have increased a little bit on the ice cream side. I'm happy with it for now and, and I'm not disturbed that it's not going to work yet. I think we have some ideas and plans and we can make it a success.
Well, I'm not willing to take it down, I'm just saying I'm concerned. I mean, I think you thought you started like three fifty, three sixty, now you're down to one seventeen or one twenty or something.
Yeah, I know the number, yeah, I've got a touch back. You know, certainly that happens sometimes, maybe can I see everybody show up and, you know, after a couple of weeks you see kind of getting a whole business with you. I definitely want to see that number go up. I think realistically we should be able to maintain double that. I think we actually want to create our records. My thing is, I want to create our records, so we can be using a lot of materials to do that. I definitely agree with you, but again, I'm not disturbed that I'm going to, and it's happened. And I feel as you know, season, I think it's going to be, okay, I think just from my people, but, um, you know, it's definitely a big problem for me to be going back there.
I'll be proud of you for that exception on that, because we're, uh, I can follow up further if you need to.
I don't think you have the mic still. I don't even know about the mic, but we really want to hear what you're saying. I just had a question because I wondered, my amendment, I just thought I think, and how hard I guess I could have gotten this off line. What is the status of the event? Do we go with that one? You're, so it was still a potential request to get this, put it probably extended or whatever, there's some different things that have happened there, but please comment me. What?
You want to do it?
I would say the odds of standing this at this point are slim.
Under that?
Um, the, what, what happened inside is that we are not so tall in the, uh, add that on, on the dictation and probably doesn't look like we're looking at any others. I, we have ruled out smaller donations, um, the legal, but to add them out, as fun as they should do it, and certain very people are using it. This is actually under, underdesigned and underutilized, kind of, a thing to apply.
I would say probably because it's small, it's what I'm thinking.
I think that's part of it, but part of it is.
You know, one can use it to cool, it's small, but I, I said, I was terrible and it's always pretty cold, even, you know, I'm so hot, but I, I wasn't, is it any fifty percent over it and we want to expect a jam, are you going to reduce the jam possible? And do something else to that space?
Yeah.
So I was just answering the meeting, the particular meeting, then who's getting the jam?
We're looking at overall.
Awesome.
Looking at overall means representation, so I think I'll, so there's a lot, and we'll be making a good decision.
Awesome. So that'll be exciting. So I'm happy, what can I do?
And now we are at discussion room from the board. And now, important, I would like to have some, the lady who walks around and keeps on the way to clean. Dr. Kep, what about the writer's bird, significant other, then, I don't know.
I can relate to people.
No, what? No, it's her sister, right?
No, you three.
Her sister, that's her?
Yeah.
Again, she, I don't know, I just, sometimes thank you, but we, I don't recognize what she does, but that's it.
I'm going to agree with you.
Yeah, I do agree.
I agree.
I'll put, I'll put a card together, maybe something in there for her, just deeper for her services, so I'll be back.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I would like to put out there a little more strongly, I made this suggestion, if you look at it a few months ago, if I get some courage from the board, can, can we get the formal bid for doing something for the sound system that was built in? And I have a chance to look at that before the end of the year, so we can at least know what it's going to cost to get a good sound system that works for the public.
We can. The struggle is, we, we have a permanent place for our board to be in, permanent, you know, seating, permanent everybody, just like regular non-stationary, regular board meeting, that, that is, that's a challenge, knowing that what we have has to be disassembled after a meeting to, to absolutely lose it. And I mean, I, you know, other than what we have, we can, we can put out some information as to what we can find.
I find it to be by doing a golden sound system for this building, that has speakers throughout.
Okay, right.
Here. I don't see this building as standalone or healthy.
I know.
This is going to be.
This will be it, so we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll do that.
Probably a headset that we can wear.
That you can wear.
That way we have a speaker right at it, like when you're having a headset, it would be available to.
Right, and the board can permission a meeting, they do have, you know, the way to return off and turn on the mic, you know, as they speak and stuff like that. But the headset is, is to be an option.
I, I know there are very good, most speakers, there's probably other ones out there. I've got to believe we can put a roof of the sound system here, that we won't continue hearing from the public, I think, or. And I'm hoping it's good news, so just want to follow up, I haven't heard anything on hog, do you have any hog update?
They're still here. But it's not here, as far as where we were with the fence, we actually met more complaints about the bears than, than the hogs.
Yeah, the bears.
The bear's been a lot, I, I guess it's probably six, you know, four or five, but the problem is, the only thing they're doing is destroying the trap dance, you know, and they're not really, I mean, they're more afraid of us than we're afraid of them, for most people, so, but I mean, that's a couple of points, so honestly, getting a couple of plates off that, but the fence is definitely, definitely not.
Think twice.
Think twice.
Okay, any other board cabinet?
I've got a question. I don't want to see them. I don't want to tell me truth. I mean, we now have no, it's not, you know.
We have no open staff positions as far as, um, I think we fill, we fill all of our positions, yes, sir.
Is that what I want to be doing?
Okay.
Is that really what we want to be? I think it's nice to hear that, but, what does it have to be so difficult?
Yes, and what I've done in the budget, as we will talk about here in a few minutes, utilizing our, our consultants a little bit more with some of the projects that I have upcoming, but Mike is committed to staying another year.
I just, I've been here for a while.
Actually, we're about.
Yeah.
That's not a solution to the problem, that's narrow, that's a ban. And now we've been three years without a sponsor, and we have had no success. I don't know what's going on.
Probably another thing to look at on there, gesture, figure out a solution for that plan.
Well, the position started out as a project manager, and then what we've done incrementally is we have assumed those duties of a project manager through the different, through our administrative and finance departments. And then the position transitioned into a utilities director position with Mike's announcement of retirement, but we, I feel confident that we can continue to utilize our consultants through the next process for some of the items that we do have. So that's why I did increase the engine and piece as you're saying.
And I think that what I'm suggesting is that when you're putting together your, or creating a way to better market the community, is that you can secretly look at a community development director who would take on that project oversight. So you've got a director in that position that has a broader scope in just marketing, but all of the things that the project manager needs to know, the community development director needs to know, so that may be something you, you know, look at when you're looking at, how you develop that plan to better market and for some. Any other board of board? We are going to take a reset. So, it's like, we're going to, so, twelve point four, let's, we're moving at, uh, what, twelve forty. Okay, this is, it wasn't official, the board meeting, it was done, and we are looking at a workshop. Omar, you going to play this for them?
I would do my best. So I figured, I prepared a memo, I went with the budget, thought I'd go over the memo and just tell them they could change it, it wouldn't work, a whole lot of things, I mean, from the last time, if we recall last, but, but it works out, I mean, we do a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in surplus for all of these loans. We're now saying we have two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of total surplus of all, all these loans. So we had a forty thousand dollar increase that basically is made up of the twenty thousand dollar revenue increase that we made in the new fees, which reduced the subsidy down to eighty. And then we also removed the utilities directors, which is stuff, um, and those two differences make up the extra twenty grand. So we've gone up forty grand since the last workshop. In the golf fund, the twenty thousand dollar change is the only change that we had in the golf fund. General fund, the business made a five thousand dollar decrease to the memberships because of the racing, build a pool, which is discussed at the last meeting. The necessary transfer in from utilities, the balance of general fund was reduced by five thousand, so it's three to five last meeting, it's only fifty now. We made some of the changes to the health insurance, so we were protecting the five percent increase to health insurance cost. The account came back and was at five and a half percent, so it fluctuated every department, about a thousand dollars, give or take. And then the accounting for my school salary and the elimination of utility director, director, um, to round out the general fund. Utility fund, uh, once again, the utility director had a big impact on wages, health insurance increased by eight thousand, and then thirty thousand dollars were included in the, in the new fees for the master plan. So once again, the savings for capital are going on one eighty of two twenty. If you want to look at page two, that gives us that full picture that I'm seeing before, that we provide, how we give that two twenty by fund. So the general fund, the hundred and seventy thousand, the three fifty changer, and then the golf fund, there's an operating subsidy of a hundred and eighty, leaving the two twenty in excess. I think we can kind of hash this, because a couple of times already on the farm, about that farm basis, I really wasn't planning on going to do that and do, do scale, unless you have any, I'll take your questions to your sort of department, you know, line, I think you got to go and review it sometime.
Well, I just, I just have a quick question on capital. We are still going to proceed under the assumption that we're going to try and hold the majority of it until January? Does anyone think it's going on? Is that correct? Still in agreement with that?
Yes. And this is what I'm indicating, the, the two hundred and thousand dollars opportunity that we got is important, but we've taken out a lot of capital costs for, um, and I would say, another thing we talked about is opportunity projects, we need more.
I would like to have a conversation on opportunities.
Are we, are we through with everything outside the budget? Are there all the changes from early on in the budget?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm, I'm finding ways to ask them.
I'm just trying to make sure we're, we're good with all the changes, we think we're really want to be able to change, and then we've got to try to, some of that, we've got a lot of work.
I'll pick, so, any other discussion?
I didn't have on the budget.
For ten, ten seconds.
Ten words, I'm just about to sound.
Yeah, I know.
Ten words.
So I think we'll jump back and forth between page three, which shows you a normal body
of capital layout, and then we'll jump out to page seventeen, and then we'll kind of go back and forth, kind of discuss what's been taken out. back and forth, kind of discuss what's been taken out, what kind of work and what kind of things. So page three shows us the positive layout, and right now we're showing access to capital with a discount, like at one twenty, one thirty dollars, whatever. And then we're spending about nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, which gives us access to two hundred and twenty thousand in year twenty twenty-one. Twenty-one, twenty-two shows the positive, three twenty-nine, twenty-two, twenty-three shows the positive, four sixty-six, twenty-three, twenty-four shows the positive, five forty-one, and then twenty-four, twenty-five shows the positive, seven hundred and thirty. So we have some savings or money available for the project, the question is now whether we allocate each project in one year in order to, based on the, the, the revenue. So the twenty, page seventeen, shows the ball at the moment, it's twenty twenty-one, showing the power in the year of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, that doesn't include the equipment lease and the hundred dollar, uh, lease renewal with the written auction. Twenty-one, twenty-two shows four or seven, twenty-two, twenty-three shows the seventy, fifty-five, and then the island that has been removed at the very bottom under the red, which are the irrigation upgrades and the year one, four, page seventeen, and the opportunities for the third part, which I know that's been out of the assessment, but we've talked about that now.
Well, I mean, that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of year one upgrades, which, uh, listens there, in that view, we have that new plan here, they have to work that.
So you have, that's the irrigation.
I think that's still need.
Oh, do you, that's irrigation, that three sixty?
Well, that's just a third one, you know, the three fifty, the, 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 the total one, that we took out.
So what? You have four three sixties at the bottom there, what's that?
So that's the actual master plan renovation, we're going to do some sort of three million, that's three million total, so that's the irrigation plus, you know, some enhancements to the year one. That's our four-year loan, I mean, a ten-year loan at four percent, will cost you about three hundred and sixty thousand for, for the ten year. So I did, I tried to just figure it out a different amount on how we can fund that, within the budget we have, because we have about three hundred thousand conservatively to call it five years available to spend, without one year deficit. If we just have irrigation at a one point seven million, and that's a hundred and nine thousand dollars debt service.
Well, and this master plan, is that, is that, is new then, is irrigation?
I don't know, is it? I haven't seen it, but I don't...
Yeah, it was a master plan? Yeah, that would be a full, I think, the master plan in comparison, the full year one renovation. So it's that irrigation and that, they do have everything.
And that's for three million?
I'm, I'm tied, I wouldn't throw the number at that, if, if, if that's just a speculation, but I wouldn't throw the number at that.
We, we remember that we've got, we've got, we've been budgeting about, you know, six million dollar project, we obviously did, we did, we did a twenty, twenty-year loan. But we just, we know that irrigation will be somewhere around a million, million bucks, and then we have maybe a million and a half, um, renovations to the course or the campus and year one modern, uh, for just the internal project that we had, and that's how we think of that now.
Well, do we have any outside input coming up with that number, or is it kind of a modern, uh, two-year stick?
A little bit, Earl, kind of had a guess, you know, some other projects have been being done, other renovation projects, which are all for entire course review, um, so we kind of use that, have the ballpark, and then kind of, that's way to just fit in certain holes and certain dynamics that I said a little bit.
So in the year one plan, have you taken into consideration opportunities, you know?
I, I would be assuming that, that is correct, to, to accomplish all of those, including others, going to be, then, they're going to be all of them, yes.
If you're doing master plan correctly, they include everything connected golf course, like the brand new golf course. The tough part is, you have the four million dollars, or under two million dollars, or anything.
So if we have a master plan that's not right up, what they want?
At this point, at this point, they've worked with someone that would put together a plan that hasn't been approved by the board yet, so they can't go to a lot of business, which is kind of a, a, well...
It's, it's like anything, it will need everyone to decide, you know, once we have a file, we have our master plan, that can do, for, 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 until we all agree with the master plan is, is okay, there's no such a question, now, because if you change, you know, move something, or fix something, or anything now.
So that would be a conversation for the next meeting, if there was a, yeah, it's a, if there was a...
Exactly, we've been looking at the master plan, that's like a, if we agree on what the master plan is, it's going to be a while before we know what the real cost is. My guess is worse than anyone. I don't, I don't think construction costs are here in, in Florida, kind of, looking off course in Florida, but I know what the cost is going to go.
Well, I, I assume most of this work will be done during the summertime, whatever work we decide to do. So really, two thousand and twenty-one is not going to be a question, is it? We're really looking at maybe doing something, you know, early in two thousand and twenty-two?
If you're looking at a master plan for renovation, we may be taking at least nine of those on the play at camp, so that they can do the work that needs to be done. So what, what, what are you, what are you using that for?
Exactly, that, the play?
I mean, it's, 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 it's been done before, we, we've closed, of course, for the entire summer, we're leaving contracts on deal. Uh, if this is the summertime, and we're closing, we're going off, we're going to move towards our end, it just makes, makes it become hard for the retirement, because we can, then, then, so...
If you can see that we do the renovation in front, you're understanding it, yeah. Thank you, gentlemen.
So, I mean, this, this, this process, if you hit four, if you hit four renovations, you know, the, 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 not fit in the current calendar, and going to the summertime, so...
Oh, so we've got to close it to winter, or is it? Unless you really want to fade without a summer here.
Right, unless you eat time all the time, or, or, you know, anything.
Well, I guess, your problem would be more that spring all the time.
I mean, until I see, I mean, until, until I see it, I can't really...
Right, unless I put a card on it, and it goes there.
I could tell you, I could figure up something, four or five million dollars or something. I could just, well, I, I...
I agree. Seems like a lot of, that we have to... Is the question of what, what do you want with the product, and whether or not there's a return on investment? It's a factor of the return on investment for some way, is the improvement in our ability to attract people to become members.
Sure, that's interesting. So, I mean, thinking that, what, you have a one point three million dollar irrigation for, now, the idea of the master plan, and obviously, we don't spend that one point three, go ahead and add, we don't spend one point three million dollars in payment, and all of a sudden, that road, uh, whether it's you guys or him, who wants to pay, it's two four million, now, you've got to tear that one point three million dollars on the irrigation to put in, what are we trying to do, to, to... So the master plan is just a road back, if we are one there, we're one there or not, you know, but at least if we're spending money now on any particular portion of the golf course, it's, it's not a fault of mine, and it's not his fault.
Concluding, we approved the master plan for golf course, we don't necessarily jump into the golf course to do all the work, but if we're going to put a million dollar irrigation upgrade in, we would put it into an area where it could be utilized for the master plan, a different way, except for, uh... Putting it in based on the way the course is set up now, and then to get it out if we decide to, to, to... Having not seen this proposed master plan, does this significantly alter the courses that exist today?
Um, not at all, um, I think we see the changes in, um, number eight, number eight, and we just totally over to, we're going to start by thousands, that would be significant to the right. Uh, I'd love to change the sixteen, um, again, the, the, the green background for the part on the right, and that, that leaves significant in front of that. Uh, seventeen, obviously, we've given, uh, and it's actually, you know, approach changes to eighteen. Uh, I think that highlights the majority of them, I think the tee shots are, um, five and a move, or you move, move around a little bit, a little bit different, and those are tee shots, but I think those are, in his name, are the big changes, they're, they're great, I mean, you know.
The year, the age change that we talked about, is that they're not identified as to where that is, or if it's too off the course?
So, I believe with the proposed irrigation plan is, whether it did, you know, I wish I could extend to you better, but maybe on current fund, I just have, has basically two, it is set on, and it doesn't necessarily, I think, the former had coverage, you get in, in this new proposal, is a lot better, you know, in the current situation.
But throughout the course?
It is, yeah, yes, all the irrigation, we don't have it now, all the, you know, with the design, I'm willing to, you know, it is not necessarily efficient to, um, add the hearing, water areas, and things like that, um, it's, it's aged to the point where we're seeing, oh, to use that, well, I don't know, I don't know, you know, it's becoming more of a freedom, uh, obviously, there's a cost to that, so efficiency, but also just structural integrity itself is kind of due to that.
And two years ago, it was a million and six, now it's now a million and three quarters. We keep waiting, and we get it to a million. But one of the other factors that I understand is, is clearly irrigation has improved over the years, you know, water management, and, and we have a commitment to continually work at improving our water usage, so we're not using the same water. And that's certainly one of the things, and the irrigation system now, and the monitors, so we've got them on schedule, but if we just have rain, we might not come on, or right now, we'd rather water, still, come on, to go on, even with spring, it's, it's kind of risky.
Well, I agree, in my heart at least, that we need to, uh, in the next five or six years, we need to do the turtle greens, the roofs, that they did last year, and I think we got, we're going to have to eventually do, uh, the irrigation. I mean, you know, originally, we weren't, had it done two years ago, three years ago, I mean, eventually, it's going to have to be done in the next five years, I think. Everything else, as far as moving the course around, that's just because we want it, not because we have it. It's not really necessary to improve what.
Well, some, some of it is clearly designed to improve what, and that's...
I like to know where.
Yeah, and that's why you need to work with the master plan, and, and decide whether or not it is something you want to look at, because again, the, the key there is, I, I just don't see us spending four million dollars to rebuild the golf course, what I do see is potentially making some changes to some of the holes, and we need to agree on what those should be, so that when we put the irrigation in, you're not coming back to their height. That's, that's the plan.
What's for a sixteen?
Well, it was, I'm a player, I mean, there's a lot of folks who, like, sixteen is not really a name, or, 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 you know, it's a pretty deep, you know, you're even talking about, um, it's very difficult, you know, to crack up, so the idea is, you know, we want to address some of the potential play building, like, you know, sixteen, seventeen, uh, you know, the more, to be used, so, and, and just, just to, you know, the, the, the , that, 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 and, 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 so there's, there isn't shooting down. So if we didn't want that, we do it, but how do we address some of the playability issues that we have at the same time? And again, this, it's all subject to discussion, we won't do it, uh, if, if we feel that it's not needed, it's a discussion, uh, that's how we do, you know, you know, the project, you know, hopefully.
What's forward with seventeen green?
It's not seventeen green that's the issue, it's seventeen is the playability of...
Well, you said it's not approved, it's not approved, it's not...
All of the greens on here, on, on USGA seventies, which has to be greenish, you know, so, uh, all that.
And this for the record, until nineteen ninety-one, all eighteen greens on WGB golf course were official greens. WGB has been over the last twenty years, switching out to USGA specs, and USGA spec green, minimum cost district green, like, of your, yeah, because you're, you're looking at subsurface greenage and several layers of different, peat grass, uh, and in some cases, you're going to put in fan consumption, and, 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 so, very... There's a lot of golf courses down there, the bottom line, and that push up green, so...
All right, so what, what we need to do today, just like obviously, we have a look at the master plan, because you're not going to get very far financially on that.
But, but the issue is, if you are anticipating changes on the master plan, it could impact where you spend money on not only irrigation, but opportunities.
Well, I don't think we can go any further than the next, well, I, I think we do two thousand and twenty and twenty-one, until the next meeting, after we do all the master plan, and then we can make changes from there, but, no doubt.
I, I agree, I, I don't think we're going to resolve the capital issue, I think it's a, you know, it's kind of a, okay, go with the three hundred thousand, now, like, the active...
Absolutely. That's all. I, I think if you do the opportunities on tournaments here, I'd like to know why you Tell them one year, if there is an issue because of this master plan, we can give it to them on terms, because terms are not part of the master plan.
I mean, I, I, I mean, I'd rather agree with that, I think the law is concerned a lot, I don't want anything, um, I, I agree with that, so we, we, that would be one course, and I believe the suggestion would be totally okay.
I mean, I think the ladies would be happy to do that, right now, they got...
It's a hundred percent certain in that direction.
In my opinion, this plan, when you redo the opportunities, is the whole set involved back, because, I'm curious, the teams aren't playing for anybody right now, I mean, at home, or at, at, and I'm afraid if we don't do something, the opportunities, I don't need to quit, like, we don't have a lot of coaching players play, but what we need to do, we need to show them the red team, we need, I mean, it's not because of the opportunities, I, I want to see a plan, but, essentially, way beyond that, because right now, we have people, we have people, good members, that can't get around the corner on ten to two, right, I mean, that's not even, I mean, that's not even playing golf. I mean, that's not even playing golf, where you've got to get two shots, is it, or not?
Sure, I can see that, yeah, and I think, so, obviously, I think opportunities, the , the, 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 and, is the number one, and, and, my, my other concern is, with the teams, it's not necessarily the length, it's, it's the size, um, in my opinion, you know, someone can't reach the corner on, on number ten here, and he's needing one, whether it's red, or the color, shit, man, I think, you know, if, if they're not, you know, if you base, if they're not on the red team.
Yeah, but we have, I know we have a lot of coaching players that, well, we have a lot of white shirts, white dogs, we have a lot of goals that should look to the red team, you know, I mean, but it, it's all a process of where you're putting, and I don't want a bunch of these playing if they ever continue to play the red teams, you know.
I mean, I'm always looking to change the opportunities for the living, I didn't know if, we never had a conversation about the other teams, you know, maybe we should, but we haven't.
And sometime, I think we should, and, 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 that's part of the master plan.
Well, because you have to get the other teams, and so people play...